I'd like to call to order the Waukesha County Council meeting for January 29th, 2019. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Rudd Brown.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Byrd.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Here.
Carol Frazer.
Here.
Sup Paul Sidhu.
Here.
Would you all like to rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the regent of justice.
So, a couple announcements. First off, please turn off your cell phones if you have them. If you'll be handing out any paperwork to council members, please give one copy to the Clerk for our office files. We're going to do a slight change in the process this morning. We have, sorry, this morning. It's been a long day already. I think we'll be saying this morning before the end of the evening. We're going to have a public hearing on the resolution to sell tax titled property, which should go relatively quickly. Then we're going to have the ordinance regarding the interim moratorium. And then before we have the open public session, we're going to have a discussion and a vote regarding a resolution regarding the process at Cherry Point. So, just to give you an idea of what's going on. For some of you, we did print, I think, 125 copies. It was a document which is a proposed resolution. We wanted to give people an opportunity to read that. That is what we'll be voting on as the third item tonight. So, if you got one, read it. If you didn't get one, and your neighbor has one, perhaps people could share. That would be helpful. So, with that, first item up is a resolution to sell tax titled property. Mr. Buchanan, that's right.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like permission to, I have to leave by 10:30 tonight because I am departing Bellingham at 2:00 a.m. to go to Washington, D.C. And I would like to give my council member update now because I have a couple things to report.
Sue.
Okay. Just to follow up with that, to let the council and the public know what's going on with some of the criminal justice things, we had a grant sponsored conference that a team from Bellingham and Waukesha County went to in June in San Francisco where we discussed incarceration prevention in young adults, 18 to 24. Part of the conference was that each team had to take a project on to work on. We chose to work on data collection and a joint resolution between Bellingham and Waukesha County to address young adult incarceration. So, they have a midpoint check-in on our projects. We have to go back to D.C. tomorrow, Thursday and Friday to reconvene the conference. So, that's why I have to leave early. The other thing I wanted to report out on is the joint meeting to select the replacement for 40th Legislative District Senate. We do have a meeting scheduled. The actual agenda has not been published. I believe it's going to be published tomorrow. Just the highlights of it are, it's Tuesday, February 5th, 2:30 p.m., and it's at the Skagit County Commissioners Hearing Room, 1800 Continental Place Mount Vernon. So, you'll be seeing that come to your inbox in the next couple days. Also, we did get an email today that council members may participate by phone. You need to let Ms. Frakes know if that's what you'd like to do, and she will help facilitate that. The other thing, it's just going to be, it's a pretty straightforward process. We're going to have a chance to hear from the nominees for five minutes and a five-minute Q&amp;A from each of the three nominees. Then there will be a council and commissioner comment period, and then the selection of a senator. So, look for that in your inbox. And I don't, that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to ask if perhaps a couple people at the back could prop those doors open. Can we do that? Madam Clerk? I think we can do that. Yeah, I think we need to try and get a bit of air into here. That'd be great. Thank you. All right. So, with the public hearings, the same rules apply in all three public hearings. Audience members who wish to address the council during a public hearing are asked to sign up at the back of the room. Prior to the meeting, the council chair will ask those who've signed up to form a line at the podium. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record and optionally include city of residence. Speakers will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of the time limits and inform speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude comments. When a large group of individuals supports the same position on an issue, the selection of one or two representatives to speak on behalf of the entire group is encouraged. Given we've got such a large crowd, I'm going to be saying this probably a couple times tonight. I'd like people to line up to the podium as, either as your name is called or when we get to the point where we're calling the names of those who are not, sorry, we're opening it up to people who are not on the list. I would like the person who is speaking, obviously, to be at the podium and to indicate their name. I'd like the next person to be standing at the podium waiting for the first person to stop speaking, and then we alternate back and forth. If we wait for people to walk down the aisle before speaking, then that'll add, probably with a crowd this size, maybe another hour to the whole proceeding. So, with that, we'll start out with the first public hearing, which is a really controversial item, and the resolution to sell tax titled property by public auction. This is AB 2019-032. Do we have a staff report? Seeing none, I open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this particular issue? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Approval.
Ms. Brown moves approval. Mr. Donovan moves second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item up is an ordinance imposing an interim moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications and permits for new and expanded facilities in the Cherry Point UGA, the primary purpose of which would be the shipment of unrefined fossil fuels not to be processed at Cherry Point AB 2019-064. Is there a staff report? Seeing none. I'd like to open the public hearing, and the names we have here. Starting up, I'm going to call roughly six names at a time, and please line up Deana Jensen, Sandy Robson, Todd Mitchell, Lane McAvoy, Steve Gary, Doug Scott, and Todd Taylor. And please start, Ms. Jensen.
Good evening, council members. I want to acknowledge that this meeting is being held on land that is the traditional territory of the Lummi and Nuksek peoples. May we nurture our relationship with our co-salish neighbors and the shared responsibilities to their homelands where we all reside today. I am speaking in support of the interim moratorium on permits and applications for new or expanded facilities for unrefined fossil fuel exports out of Cherry Point. I thank our council members for thus far keeping moratoriums in place until they have created measures that will provide better protections from negative impacts of fossil fuels to the people, land, air, water, and life forms in our county and in and around Guachiakin and the Cherry Point Aquatic Reserve. It is urgent that we reduce our consumption of fossil fuels and industrial projects that process, transport, and extract them. Everyone, everywhere, needs to decrease practices that lead to production. This means we should not be increasing those practices, not here, not at other refining facilities in other areas of the country, not overseas in other nations. Some people like to point out that our facilities at Cherry Point operate under strong regulation and that they pollute less and are less dangerous than other fossil fuel facilities. First of all, thank you to those who created and voted to approve such regulations in the past. I know they suffered adversity and resistance in seeking to provide us with those protections. Second, increasing fossil fuel production here poses a greater threat of irreversible damage being caused at the point of extraction in the communities that fossil fuels travel through and here where we live. At the same time, increasing fossil fuel production in Waukesha County does nothing to provide for reduction of production in other areas. I see no actions of our council, of our state government, of our federal government, or of energy companies themselves that demonstrate or promise that increasing fossil fuel production here will decrease that production overseas or elsewhere. I call on our council members to approve this moratorium and for the energy companies in Waukesha County to start proposing projects that are focused on producing renewable energy. Thank you.
Just to remind everybody, the rules of the council is we neither applaud nor show disapproval for any speaker. The purpose of this is to make sure that everybody feels that they have an equal ability to talk without intimidation or otherwise. So, please continue.
Good evening, council members. Sorry?
I think I'm next.
I was going to alternate back and forth, but I'm happy to let.
I'm number two.
I understand you're number two on the list. I will let you go forward, but I did say at the beginning I was going to alternate back and forth between the two podiums. But please continue.
Sandy Robson, Birch Bay. I support AB 2019-064, the ordinance imposing an interim moratorium. Stronger and permanent protections at Cherry Point, known to Lummi Nation as Guachiakin, are desperately needed. Extending the interim moratorium allows needed time for the council to put those protections in place so it can properly finish the job it started in 2016. According to a January 2019 KUOW article, our county was home to three of the top 10 climate polluters in Washington State in 2017. Those same polluting companies, BP, Phillips 66, and Alcoa and Talco Works, have been listed in the top 10 polluters in our state for numerous years. It's imperative we protect public safety, treaty rights, and our environment such that we put stronger and permanent protections in place. In 2012, Waukesha County's planning department permitted two dangerous crude-by-rail logistics facilities at Guachiakin without requiring an EIS. The only small protection provided in those permits are stipulations on the number of crude oil trains allowed to call on BP and Phillips 66. In the permit granted to BP, there's a stipulated limit to add one train unit per day on an annual basis to existing rail traffic on the BNSF Custer Spur. And in the permit granted to Phillips 66, there's a stipulated limit to add one unit train every other day on an annual basis to existing rail traffic. Any additional train traffic beyond those stipulations at BP or Phillips 66 will require additional CEPA environmental review. However, it's worth noting that our county never set up a mechanism to ensure that the stipulated number of crude oil trains comply with that stipulation, other than we're supposed to just take BP's and Phillips 66's word on those crude oil train numbers. After those two crude-by-rail facilities were permitted in Waukesha, without an EIS, there have been numerous frightening crude oil train derailments over the years since. Besides crude-by-rail threats to Waukesha County, there are also serious dangers presented by pipelines, either currently in existence or those which companies want to propose. A short list of some of the pipeline incidents that occurred in the U.S. over just the last eight months include: January 2019, Enbridge's natural gas pipeline in Ohio exploded. October 2018, a natural gas pipeline in Prince George, B.C. ruptured. That pipeline imports natural gas into the Pacific Northwest at Sumeras. September 2018, a section of Energy Transfer Partners Revolution Pipeline exploded in a residential neighborhood in Pennsylvania.
30 seconds, please.
June 2018, a trans-Canada natural pipe, gas pipeline exploded in West Virginia. Here in Waukesha, companies continue additional efforts to transport fracked oil, gas, and tar sand fuels across our county's lands and over our shorelines and through our waterways. We need to extend the interim moratorium while the Cherry Point amendments proposal goes through any refinement process as it moves toward finalization into statute and/or code. Thank you very much, and thanks for letting me go.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members. My name is Todd Mitchell. I'm with the Washington State Building and Construction Trades Council. Over the last 30 years of my career, I have worked in all the refineries in Washington State. I've been party to the billions of dollars in investments that have been made, and those investments have been made typically in new technology that brings cleaner projects to our state. With that, I'd like to reference Councilmember Donovan's January 15th amendment. That amendment effectively makes it economically infeasible for our refineries to make the technological changes that they need to make to keep their refineries keeping up with time and continue to make a cleaner product and a cleaner environment that we have here. We would be effectively either forcing them to shut down or run them into a state that would be non-beneficial to everybody involved. I believe over time that this has not been the core reasons or principles behind the initial statements that we came out with for ensuring that we have positive regulations on our refineries here in Washington State. And the only way we're going to do that is be able to do it in a way that allows those refineries to be able to continue to operate. And as that change in technology changes, we move into the next step. But with that, I really would ask that people reconsider the proposal that was made on the 15th to remove that proposal from your thoughts and move back to the original and see what we can, how we can move Waukesha County in the direction that's going to work for not just one segment of our population, but for all of us. Thank you very much.
Before you start, if Todd Taylor, Joe Wilson, Max Perry, Ronald Colson, Jim Ace, and Shyla Britt could come up as well. Mr. Gary.
Thank you, council, for allowing this chance to provide comments. My name's Steve Gary. Some of you know my background as a retired refinery worker and refinery union, local refinery union president. I volunteer now with the Blue Green Alliance of Washington State. I want to encourage you to extend the temporary moratorium, but I want to comment more on the comp plan amendments that have been proposed. I salute you for considering this really important issue. It's something that I've worked around my entire life in shipbuilding and in construction and in oil refining, where corporate employers would insist that we can't have environmental protection and economic growth at the same time. I've always thought that was a false choice. It's easier to say, though, that it's a false choice than it is to do. You're wrestling with a very tough question. I salute you for it. The fact is that the council has a responsibility, I think, to support both economic opportunity and environmental protection. The community needs both. It seems that existing regulations may be biased. I certainly support and think that they should be balanced. But at the same time, we shouldn't over-correct and go from bias one way to bias the other way. I think we need to take the time, I would encourage the council, to take the time for due diligence to get this important language right. I think Waukesha County policy should be to support existing refineries and other infrastructure at Cherry Point in order to ensure the safest and cleanest possible production. It takes permits to do that, permits to modernize equipment, to improve emissions, to make them more efficient. We'd like to see them, of course, adapt to a changing market and changing economy by producing products perhaps like biofuels or products that are not meant for internal combustion. And they need permits to do that. We should not drive the old energy economy off a cliff before investments in a clean energy economy are more widespread. Allowing existing jobs as we encourage investments in a clean economy will allow for a just transition. The transition will not be manageable for this community unless we make it so. The policy should support both the industry we have as well as the industry that we want. I would encourage the council to add a policy statement to the existing comp plan amendments, similar to other policy statements that are there in Section 16.08.160, a policy statement in support of existing operations. The permits required to do that.
30 seconds, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name's Todd Taylor. I'm the business manager for Plumbers and Pipe Thitters, Local 26 of Western Washington. And I'm also the executive secretary for the Northwest Washington Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the 550-plus journeymen and apprentices and 200-plus retirees from Local 26. And I'm also here speaking on behalf of the 5,000-plus construction craft personnel that live in and around Waukesha County. I was here at last council meeting and asked you to not pass a moratorium on the sixth Cherry Point fossil fuel permit. I'm here again to ask you to do the same thing. After leaving that last meeting, I took a chance, or took the chance, to read Councilman Donovan's changes. We believe they are much more damaging than the previous ones, and we didn't like those ones either. In Waukesha County Executive's Jack Lous's letter to the council, Jack points out that the Donovan changes require conditional use permits and EISs on all fossil fuel facilities and apply to everything from parking lots to equipment replacement. Those defending these changes say there is an exemption. The problem is that it is not available to those currently located in the heavy impact industrial zone at Cherry Point. I realize that the Donovan changes will go through more public review, and you can still make changes, but the fact that you would even submit such a radically destructive change to the planning commission is hard to imagine. Please stop before you severely damage the livelihoods of thousands of hard-working union men and women. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Lane McAvoy. I live in Linden, Washington, with my wife, Michelle, and my two kids, Luke and Sophie. Wanted to start off with talking about something Mr. Buchanan just said, talking about prevention of youth, of young adult incarceration, and it just hit home with me because I think one of the keys to that is giving them good opportunities, and that starts with good jobs. So, I work for J.H. Kelly. We're the general contractor at Phillips 66. This is my 23rd year in construction, and most of that has been in refinery-related construction. I've seen recent workloads in these refineries drop since this council started this moratorium, and I'm extremely concerned that the only livelihood I know is going to go away. This council is impairing the way of life I and my brothers and sisters in construction rely upon. I take it personal that some of the elected officials seem to be ramrodding through regulation that limits my ability to provide for my wife and kids. If this negative political practice continues, I'll be focused to spend life in hotels again. My kids will know me through phone calls instead of through hugs. Please reconsider this closed-minded assault on the way of life that we in this room hold. It's how we survive. I'm going to end with a question. What good businessperson would want to bring jobs to this county if you chase the jobs we have away?
Okay. Madam Clerk, I'm just wondering if, assuming as we have such a large audience, maybe we could produce a few more copies of the document that we talked about before because I think some people are unaware that there's been additional work done on this particular topic. Would that be possible?
The resolution?
Yeah.
I think there are still copies.
There's still copies at the back?
I believe so.
Okay. If there aren't, if we could add some. So, sorry.
Max Perry, Waukesha County. I have a copy of the new surprise proposal from, for Cherry Point, from Brown, Donovan, and Sidhu that came out very recently before your 14 meeting on it. So, it's recently that a lot of you haven't even read it yet. When you do, it'll curl your hair. I also have a copy of the Western States Petroleum Association that is concerned with the moratorium before this most recent one, and they would really, really be concerned, that they're asking you to stop the moratorium and just proceed with the normal normal updates and regulations for the refineries on it. But I would say, after reading this, this new proposal, that is exceedingly stringent, exceedingly negative, exceedingly hard, and just like the young fellow that just spoke before me, that I don't see any reason why any business would want to come to Waukesha County with this, this kind of a proposal. And that's to the heavy industrial area that's been there for 70 years. And I just, it's just unreasonable. Thank you.
Just before you start, Erin Strange, Warren Shea, Jean Carmen, I think it's Umar Faver, Alex Ramel, and Tom Beck.
Joe Wilson. I live here in Bellingham. The vice president of Petersa Brothers, we're a heavy industrial steel fabricator, also located here in Bellingham. We do a lot of work at the refineries. Talking about youth and incarceration, I was on the Board of Directors of Sponsors for the state of, in the state of Oregon, where businesses, where we sponsored jobs for people who are incarcerated. I would like to see something like that in this state. And if you would ever like to speak to how we did it in Oregon, I'd be happy to get with you about that. But it was all about businesses having jobs. You'll hear here tonight, a lot of people testify that work at these refineries. My company, we do not work on-site. We are off-site. And if you look at the studies, you'll find that for every job that is on-site, there's 10 jobs off-site that are connected to the refineries. I do know, and I apologize for having to say something I've said before, but we do have a new member of the council, so the rest of you'll just have to put up with this. The, if, and I think that it was touched on previously, that the people who decide to invest in these refineries, they're made, those decisions are made at a corporate level. It's not made here in Waukesha County. And I do know that there is funding for some projects that are not going ahead right now in Waukesha County. And I wonder if that funding is being put at other refineries that those companies own because of the attitude of this council and the anti-business attitude this council has reflected. If that's the case, then you're already costing people jobs. You're already taking away from our tax base. You know, we can work together, but this latest proposal, that isn't working together. That is sitting even a stronger meshes that you do not want these jobs in this county. These refineries spend a lot of money cleaning the air and cleaning the environment. I build that equipment. And I also work in the solar power industry. I've been a consultant for Tesla
30 seconds, please.
On their gigaplan down in Nevada. And I can tell you that the carbon steel, my business steel, is a lot larger for wind and solar than it is for other sources for power. So, I really feel like we need to send the right meshes here, and we need to work together and know on this moratorium. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jim Ace. I live here in Bellingham with my family, two kids. I want to thank you all for your leadership and the courage it takes to take on this extremely tough issue. I'm also a former member of a labor union, and I appreciate the comments so far. I am here to speak tonight in support of this moratorium on permits that would increase the shipment of unrefined fossil fuels through Cherry Point. I also support council action to move forward with a new zoning ordinance that will make fossil fuel facilities require conditional use permits and more thorough CEPA review. This ordinance is important to ensure transparency about proposals and their impacts, accountability to meet standards for public safety and environmental protection, and more public participation in the process for reviewing permits for projects with significant impacts. I support action to the greatest extent of your power to protect the people and natural resources of Waukesha County from risky expansions that would bring more crude oil, tar sands, bitumen, fracked gas, propane, or coal through our towns, farmlands, and waterways. I hope this will be the last time this temporary moratorium needs to be extended, as we will see the new ordinance proceed with review by the planning commission in a timely manner so the council may make their final review and vote for approval of code amendments. so the council may make their final review and vote for approval of code amendments this spring. Again, thank you for your support of the moratorium.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ronald Coulson. I live in Geneva neighborhood. I'm representing the Mount Baker Group of the Sierra Club this evening. We firmly support the continuation of the moratorium preventing new or expanded refining capacity and/or unrefined export facilities at the Cherry Point UGA. Since the extension of the moratorium must end in six months, we also support the implementation of the council's new proposal to make permanent our desire for Waukesha County to become part of the solution to global climate disruption rather than continuing to be part of the problem. We recognize that our society will continue to need many of the products that are made from crude oil, things like lubricants, pharmaceuticals, plastics, clothing, personal hygiene products, and many, many more. To that end, the Sierra Club supports the continued current operations at the Cherry Point refineries. In fact, we would very much like to see new manufacturing industries added to the Cherry Point UGA that convert those refined products into the everyday household items that all of us use. The oil companies have threatened that their Cherry Point refineries might have to shut down due to a lack of competitiveness if they are not allowed to expand. Let's debunk that hollow threat. Currently, there are only 135 operating refineries in the U.S. Due to their high risk to the environment and the unwillingness of residents to live nearby, the permitting and construction of any new refineries would be next to impossible. That makes the Cherry Point refineries rare and valuable properties for their owners. Therefore, there is zero risk that the Cherry Point refineries would be shut down if they are not allowed to expand. We also recognize that burning fossil fuels must and will rapidly be phased out worldwide if we are to assure a continued livable climate on our tiny planet. It would be foolishly short-sighted for Waukesha County to double down on what will be a rapidly shrinking industry. Therefore, increasing the refining or export capacity of Cherry Point refineries is not in the long-term best interests of anyone. Only oil company executives and shareholders would benefit in the short term from any refining or export expansion. In summary, the Sierra Club opposes all expansion of fossil fuel production and/or crude oil export at Cherry Point. We support a healthy, livable planet Earth for all of its inhabitants. To facilitate increased global burning of fossil fuels is diametrically opposed to our goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shiloh Britt, and I am here today on behalf of five generations of Waukesha County residents to ask you to extend this moratorium once again. When I was young, I made my grandpa a promise to do whatever I could to ensure that we righted the environmental wrongs of his generation. He worked at GP for 50 years. And to help keep Waukesha County safe, healthy, and beautiful. It is because of this promise that I encourage you to move forward with the new zoning ordinance so we may ensure the impacts of fossil fuels are fully accounted for today and for future generations. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Warren Shea. I live in Bellingham. June 10, 1999, almost 20 years ago, Liam Wood, Wade King, Stephen Seorvis, three of our young people perished in the Olympic Pipeline explosion. What must it feel like to lose a child in a horrific event that was completely preventable? Just imagine what those families have been through. I can assure you, they're still grieving to this day. Safety, safety, safety. Safety is more important than money and profits and jobs. Lives are more important than money and profits and jobs. Fossil fuels are dangerous. The moratorium must continue until safety is assured. The 1999 explosion must never happen again. Clean, renewable energy must be our future. Thank you.
Just before you start, Jane Bright, Jane Freudenberger, sorry. Dirk Vermeer, Vermeerin, David Kirchner, and Jack McBride, and Abe Jacobson. Okay, please continue.
Good evening. My name is Erin String, and I am an environmental specialist at the Phillips 66 Ferndale Refinery. Over the past few years, I've testified about the Cherry Point fossil fuel moratorium ad nauseam, so I'll keep my comments on the moratorium brief tonight. It is poorly written, inconsistent, and unfairly disadvantages Waukesha County businesses. Please vote not to extend it. Councilmember Donovan, Stand Earth and Resources have proposed concerning changes to the Waukesha County Comprehensive Plan and Waukesha County Code. From the scope of the proposed changes, it is clear that their intent is to curb economic development and job creation in this county. These changes will limit not only existing industries, but also the green industries that you as a council have repeatedly said you support, and that Phillips 66 is actively working to bring to this community. From the proposed greenhouse gas language, it appears that the council wants to regulate greenhouse gases at the local level. The irrefutable fact is that greenhouse gas is a worldwide problem. Requiring offsets within Waukesha County will only have a negative impact on Waukesha County industries. There will only be so many offsets available locally. Over time, requiring local offsets will require the shutdown of more and more equipment, negatively impacting our economy. Please put the citizens who elected you first, rather than ruining the livelihoods of those living in this county in pursuit of a local answer to a global problem. One of the more concerning proposed code revisions requires conditional use permits and environmental impact statements for all fossil fuel facilities and accessory uses in the Cherry Point area. It makes no sense to allow for existing, it makes no allowance for existing industries in the heavy industrial impact zone. As the county executive said in his letter to you, this proposal is a true job killer. Waukesha County needs more family wage jobs, and these comp plan and code revisions have the opposite impact. The existing CEPA process balances economic growth and environmental responsibility, and it does it well. With that in mind, I respectfully request that you reject the moratorium and the proposed changes to the comp plan and the code. Thank you.
Jean Carmen, 1113 Chuckanet, Bellingham. Thank you for holding this hearing. I'd like to support this moratorium on the shipment of unrefined fossil fuel from Cherry Point, hopefully the last. In supporting past moratoriums, I've tried to marshal environmental and economic facts as the basis of my statement. This time, I will use personal experience facts. I was born and raised in an Illinois coal mining community 20 miles from a large refinery. We had to wait until the third snow brought down all the dust from the trees until we could make snow ice cream. So, I have a certain perspective. When we came to teach at Western and built a house of salvaged timbers on the edge of Chuckanet Bay, this area was pristine. What has changed? Back then, when we washed the windows, they would stay clean for weeks. This year, they were clean the day before Christmas, and one week later, they were badly smeared with diesel exhaust and coal dust. Our rhododendrons have the same gunk on their leaves, and some are dying. Chuckanet Island has many dead trees, as does the bank along the shore. The heavy coal and oil trains, 25 a day and counting, need at least three diesel engines to move them. The ocean was supposed to save us by absorbing CO2, but that has resulted in a dying sea. The limpet starfish and the occasional oyster are all gone from the rocks below us. Worse, the acidic waters will not allow Taylor shellfish down the road to grow its own seed. The herring balls, which used to surface in front of our house as they were chased by salmon, have been gone for at least 10 years, as has the fishing fleet, which used to stretch from Chuckanet Bay to Lummi Island, a veritable sea of lights. Now it is dark. Those jobs are gone. And we all know about the deaths of orcas because of the lack of salmon, because of the lack of herring, because of the lack of spawning areas. The aquatic preserve at Cherry Point is a noble attempt to preserve one of the herring spawning areas necessary to preserve the Salish Sea. Increasing infrastructure there would be incredibly destructive. I've got a paragraph I'm gonna skip, so you can get home, and so can I. As I look outside at my changed environment, it is clear that the orcas and the estuaries they need to survive are not the only threatened species. It is we, our children and our grandchildren, who will be diminished, and it is we who can change, if not entirely reverse, environmental damage. A report issued by a not-exactly-supportive administration gives us 12 years. Citizens can only share what we think. You have the power.
Thank you.
My name is Thomas Beck, and I moved to Waukesha County eight years ago to pursue a career in the building trades. In the last eight years, I became a journeyman pipefitter. I married a Lakeway Fred Meyer cashier. I bought a house in Bellingham. And two years ago, my son was born. I'm attending Bellingham Technical College, and I work in the Waukesha County refineries. The fossil fuel moratorium, it's gonna hurt my brothers in the building trades, it's gonna hurt my family, and it's gonna hurt all of our futures if it goes through. Let's reject it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Alex Rammel, Stand Earth. I want to say thanks at the start for all of the time and energy that you continue to put into this complicated and multifaceted discussion. I will also start off by saying that I support the continuation of the moratorium. I think the discussion tonight and the discussion that you had earlier today suggests that the community still needs to keep working on the details of this, and the moratorium creates the space to do that. The resolution that's in front of you, I'll be honest, I spent a couple hours scratching my head on it, and I think you can put me down as supportive with concerns. I'm gonna email you in the next day or two with those concerns, and I hope you'll consider them seriously. But I want to tell you that I support strongly the statement of intent that the existing refineries and industries at Cherry Point should be able to do basic maintenance work and should be able to make safety improvements without complication. Where we draw the line between those kinds of improvements and facility expansions that should have a much more rigorous community review process before permitting is an important discussion, and I'm glad that we're taking the time to have that conversation. Public process is good. We've got a lot more of that public process in front of us. More eyes on this is better. Certainly support the idea that Cascadia Law should take another look at this before moving forward. And I'll just wrap up by saying that I hope the county executive's office will take the olive branch that this resolution offers and use that as an opportunity to enter into dialogue and work together to get to a final product that we can all be proud of. Thanks.
Just before you start, Cheyenne, I think it's Hen, I think it's Hen Schusson, Gabby Brown, Jeff Tenpass, Sandy Lawrence, Barry Winger, and Paula Rotundi. Please.
Hi. Thank you for listening to me tonight. My name's Omar Favella, and I'm a Waukesha County resident. I live in Ferndale with my beautiful wife and two daughters, Olivia, who she's two years old, and she thinks she owns the house, and Ava, who is six months old. I want to be able to see them grow up in Waukesha County and graduate high school and then go off to college. But with the new proposed changes to the comp plan and county codes related to the Cherry Point UGA, it is very unlikely I will be able to support my family in this county as I am fortunate enough to have the great job working for these Cherry Point Industries. I am against the proposed changes to the comp plan and county codes that would make it virtually impossible for Cherry Point businesses to upgrade their processes and systems to adapt to the ever-changing market. If they are unable to be competitive and profitable, just like any other business, they will eventually have to shut down. With that, we will lose over $200 million in tax revenue that benefit our county schools, first responders, infrastructure, and libraries, and not to mention the millions of charitable donations that these industries make to our county and local organizations. The livelihood of my family and many thousand other Waukesha families will be impacted by your decision. And many of those families and people that work for the refineries are here tonight and opposed to these changes. Not only will the current Cherry Point businesses be impacted, but the ability to create new economic development and job creations in our county, this will create a chilling effect on our future economic investment and opportunities in this county. There was many people that mentioned tonight that with these decisions, why would any business want to come to this county to create business? They will also be able to create more jobs for other people. I'm fortunate enough, like myself, to have a stay-at-home wife. These businesses and industries are already federally regulated. We should let our federal government and its agencies do their job and leave these Cherry Point industries to thrive in our community and continue to provide great benefits to our community and county. I enjoy working at these facilities because they care about their employees, the environment, and the community which they operate in. They don't take any shortcuts when it comes to safety and the environment. I feel personally safe working inside these facilities because I know they put their money where their mouth is when it comes to safety of their employees, contractors, and neighbors. There is no price for safety. That is a motto inside these gates.
30 seconds, please.
In closing, I oppose the sixth passage of the Cherry Point Fossil Fuel Moratorium and the council proposed changes to the comp plan and county codes. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jane Bright, and I would like to support the continuation of the moratorium. I want to thank you for taking on this issue because it is messy, challenging, emotional. I don't have to tell you that, you're hearing it right now. Take the time to find that sweet spot between supporting the current operations there such that safety enhancements can be permitted appropriately, best-available control technology to reduce any pollution can come in, but does not perpetuate and expand the fossil fuel industry. This is an industry that is in terrific, rapid transition, and the, you know, the future of it is going, that's going to demise. We cannot, as a humanity, continue to rely on fossil fuels. Why would we bring a new fossil fuel industry here when we know that it's gonna go away? The jobs we need to bring in need to be the jobs of the future. Another thing that's worth mentioning is that in terms of protecting people, because this is all about protecting people that we're talking about, and people includes economy, but it also means our health. The Associated Press just released a report two days ago about what's happening in Washington, D.C., with some of the rollbacks of protections for these industries. And they summarize that this would be an $11.6 billion gift to the industry, the cost to people, 1,400 premature deaths a year, a billion tons of CO2 into the air, increased risk of water contamination, fewer safety checks. In other words, we're kind of on our own. So, it's up to us to protect ourselves and for you folks to do what you can to make sure that the new permitting, again, supports safety upgrades of our existing operations without expanding, you know, basically a dinosaur industry, no pun intended. This is really personal to me. Now, I look out the window and I see those plumes of Cherry Point every single day, and I happen to know it's in them, and it's not just steam. If you talk about fine particulate matter, that's a byproduct of burning fossil fuels, the EPA has said that the only safe level of exposure is zero. And then there are carcinogens and VOCs and all sorts of pollutants that affect public health. It affects my health, my children's health. If you've never been around an oil spill, I recommend that you get to an oil spill because I have.
30 seconds, please.
And it makes places uninhabitable. This is very serious, and I ask you to find that balance between the economics, but first and foremost, protect public health. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jack McBride. I live in Bellingham. I want to speak tonight in support of the continuing moratorium on the use of the Cherry Point facilities. Since August of 2016, the council's passed six separate ordinance restricting the expansion of the facilities at Cherry Point for the purpose of transshipment of unrefined fossil fuels. And none of these ordinances over the past 30 months have resulted in any of the dire operating or financial consequences that the refineries and their agents have forecast. And while Cherry Point has continued to produce nearly half the refined crude oil needs of Washington, Idaho, and Oregon, but they're doing it with increasing dependency on the highly volatile Bakken crude rail shipments and Canadian tar sands via pipeline. So, even with no expansion of facilities, the risk to the county has increased substantially. Yet, we gather- Yet we gather here tonight to consider the seventh moratorium ordinance, even though the will of the people and the council has been clear and consistently in favor of all the previous ordinances. All the votes have been either six to one or five to two in favor. It's well past the time for the council to move beyond this continuous process of temporary moratoriums and make lasting changes to our zoning amendments to enable the county to proactively manage the risks to its citizens of expanded fossil fuel operations and shipping facilities at Cherry Point. And the Brown-Donovan-Sadu Resolution, which was distributed tonight, does an excellent job of providing a roadmap for the county. I strongly support the passage of this well-conceived and comprehensive resolution. Thank you for all your work on that. Thanks.
Ms. Friedenberger, sorry for messing your name up.
That's all right. I'm Jane Friedenberger, Bellingham, Washington. I'm very happy to be here tonight to support the last moratorium to make sure there are no new permits for any fossil fuel or any other hazardous materials being shipped from Cherry Point while we wait for an undated set of rules. I support the Donovan Amendment. I hope all of you also will when it comes back to the council for a final vote. We should not have to come back time after time to the council to make the same points, both sides. But we are willing to because the council has worked very hard on this, and we realize that, and I thank you for that. Many of us in this chamber have spent the last few years fighting fossil fuel expansion projects in this county and state. We have been fairly successful, but not successful enough. The U.S. Global Change Research Program's latest report puts us succinctly, global warming is here and already affecting our planet. Can there be any doubt watching the devastation caused by hurricanes, fires, and floods the last years that the cost of carbon emissions is too much? We saw the effects of the warming ocean when Tequila carried her dead baby 17 days up and down the coastline. What was she trying to tell us? Enough. Yes, eventually, we must transition to renewable energy. There is no way out of this other than that. This ordinance does not do that. It allows the present industries to continue, but does not allow them to transition to shipping unrefined fossil fuels. It doesn't allow them to become nothing but a fuel dump, no high-paying jobs there. So yes, of course, continue the moratorium. Make sure the ordinance passes and becomes reality. We must not ever even think of expanding pipelines to ship the most ecological damming of all fuels, tar sands, oil. We can't even think of allowing more bomb trains transit our countryside, bringing with them the chance of a nightmare explosion right in the middle of our county. We know what that is. We cannot even think of having to fight small projects, one after another, that all add up to the ability to ship more fuel. Every project that has potential to affect the Salish Sea must pass a CIPA EIS review of the cumulative impacts. There can be no adverse impacts on herring, salmon, orca, or other endangered species, and that means us, you and me. With global warming changing our planet...
Thirty seconds, please.
With global warming changing our planet, we, the people, are an endangered species.
My name is David Kirschner. I live on Lemmy Island, and I support the proposed moratorium. I and many of my neighbors on Lemmy Island are concerned about the transshipment of unrefined fossil fuels from Cherry Point. We're concerned about the health and environmental risks. I support economic development at Cherry Point, but we need to do it in a way that protects the environment and protects public health. One of the reasons I'm here and one reason I'm concerned is stated well in the proposed ordinance. It states, talking about the risks of transshipment of crude oil. "A unit train carrying Bakken crude traveling through Mosher, Oregon on June 3, 2016, derailed and exploded, causing damage to property and the Columbia River, demonstrating that recently adopted state and federal policies and corporate investment intended to reduce the risks associated with oil by rail have proven insufficient to protect communities along the rail corridor." The Planning Commission needs adequate time to review the proposed regulations. I think it's reasonable that the Cascadia Law Group finishes the work that was originally intended, and the council needs to finalize the regulations before the moratorium is lifted. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Dirk from Erin. As the resident of Watcomb County, we ask you to extend the current moratorium on permits for unrefined fossil fuel exports, projects, and expansions. As an oil industry professional, including three years as an environmental engineer, I supported the industry on the other side. I'm fully aware of both sides of this issue. The reason the oil industry can claim to be clean and environmentally friendly is because we, the public, are watching, and we, as stakeholders, have implemented laws and regulations holding them to higher standards. Therefore, I ask that you implement the January 15 draft ordinance originally proposed by Todd Donovan, which will allow us to monitor all projects that impact our community. Implementing the ordinance will allow your constituents to have a voice in their future, quality of life, and achieving a long-term vision. Over the last three years, the effects of growth in our region negatively impacting our quality of life in the Salish Sea ecosystem underpin the need to strengthen our regulations. In response, an increasing number of coastal communities have taken control of their future and passed regulations that will maintain the highest standards of life that we have taken for granted. We ask that you facilitate the hard work of all involved over the last three years and the approved proposed amendments. Thank you for your time.
Just a reminder, please move up to the podium once it becomes vacant so you can start talking immediately. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Cheyenne Henriksen. I am a resident in Watcomb County, and I don't want to be repetitive, but I'm here in favor of the moratorium. And as many other people have come up here and already said today, fossil fuels is not a renewable resource, and it'll be gone eventually, and it does not make sense to increase. Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. I'm so nervous. I just wanted to say I support the moratorium.
You're doing fine.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Abe Jacobson, Bellingham. Thank you, folks, for considering the moratorium. I strongly support Councilmember Donovan's January 15 proposal and am open-minded about the newer one that was just shown in printout on the table. Every time that we have a session like this, the company seems to reset the clock and give everybody the idea, which is wrong, that this is to take away jobs. No jobs that currently exist at Cherry Point are in any way threatened by a moratorium of this sort. This moratorium is to provide the county with additional information and time to prepare for the future, and the county does not want to have crude oil or crude hydrocarbon exports. That's a formula for reducing jobs. The county is trying to maintain jobs, and the way that you maintain them is to make sure that every bit of, every cc of crude oil that comes into this county, whether by rail or by ship, is refined here. And good-paying jobs to union, and I think BP should get on the stick and unionize. Good-paying jobs here, and I don't want to see bad-paying jobs in China and a lot of crude oil going out through the passes and byways of our northern inland waters to go to Shengdu Province and provide jobs there. But that's what the oil companies want to do. Please pass the moratorium. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gabby Brown. I'm a junior at Western Washington University, and I would just like to say that I strongly support the moratorium. Thank you.
Just before you get going, Debbie Cantrell, Mike Senate, Virginia Mulchrist, Joe Murphy, and Pete Romero.
My name is Paula Rotandi, and I'm speaking in support of the moratorium. And I'm speaking in support of the moratorium because it benefits everyone who lives in Watcomb County and especially those who work at Cherry Point. Since the moratorium was enacted in August 2016, it has not interfered with any ongoing operations or jobs at Cherry Point, and it has not interfered with any maintenance or major upgrade projects or projects to improve the safety of operations. The moratorium has prohibited new projects designed to convert or construct facilities that would export fossil fuels that have not been refined or processed by the workers at Cherry Point. The moratorium protects Cherry Point jobs. I support the moratorium because it protects our health and our safety and our life-giving environment from the additional risks of evermore ships, trains, and pipelines prone to spilling, exploding, or burning their toxic contents. I support the moratorium because it is a step toward mitigating climate change, which is already causing record temperatures, drought, water availability and quality problems, wildfires, and days of smoke-filled air unfit to breathe. December's multimillion-dollar storm surge damage to Birch Bay homes, businesses, and infrastructure is a tiny preview of what we're going to face if we don't take immediate action to slow the rise of sea level caused by climate change. The recent IPCC report says that we have only about 10 years to significantly reduce fossil fuel use, or we will suffer the worst possible and irreversible impacts of climate change. No amount of love, or money, or science denial can give anyone alive 25 years from now a chance for a healthy life that even remotely resembles ours today if we do not take significant steps now to slow climate change. So every day the moratorium stops new fossil fuel projects, please make progress toward attracting the clean energy industries and their jobs upon which our children's lives and our tiny planet depend. Thank you for doing this hard work.
Hi, my name is Jeff Tenpass. I'm a partner with BAI Environmental Services of Linden, Washington. We have been in business for over 35 years providing services to these industries at Cherry Point and others across the Pacific Northwest. I'm a concerned business owner and voting resident of Watcomb County. We employ over 65 people throughout the year that all live in this area. As has stated in past and written verbal comments to the county council and Planning Commission, I strongly encourage you to protect and enhance the existing industrial base at Cherry Point. I ask you not to extend the moratorium and most certainly rescind the resolution January 15th and also the one distributed today. Protect jobs, protect business. These industries have been good stewards. I understand the concern of having high-hazard facilities and the potential impact to public safety or the environment. Business prosperity, public safety, and environmental stewardship can exist together when we work together. They have been for decades. I encourage each one of you to take a drive through the area sometime if you haven't done so in a while. These industries provide good jobs. There have been previous public comments and responses from council members that the changes to the comp plan, the past discussions involving restrictions on building an additional pier and such, was to protect these jobs, these good family wage jobs that are harder to find in other parts of the county or region. The message to business currently with some of the recent amendments, me as a business owner, this is just what I'm seeing, the message is we do not want you to come here, pick somewhere else. If you are here, we don't want you here. I am all about caring for our resources and keeping the bar high to prevent pollution and impact to the environment. There's already a public review process for proposed large projects like a pier. There are controls and monitoring in place for air, land, and water. Please stop adding burden to businesses and the individual people that have jobs there. Let us be fooled no longer. I feel that this council has been pushing businesses away. They want industry and jobs, farming and food, available water, and humans to leave. I ask that this council begin to protect us. I thank our local energy producers for providing transportation fuels, heating fuels during this cold snap, and other beneficial byproducts. I ask you not to extend this moratorium and most certainly rescind the recent resolutions, and just invite you to this recent one distributed tonight, have a conversation with the providers at Cherry Point. There's a lot of laws written in it. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, no applause or criticism of any given speaker. Thank you.
My name is Sandy Lawrence. I live in Bellingham, but actually three miles north of the city limits. I am here to support the idea of avoiding the build-out of further fossil fuel infrastructure in Watcomb County. Of course, you may be familiar with things that I have talked about before. I'm gonna try and bring up two topics that have not been discussed previously, not by me or anybody else, and certainly not tonight. The first has to do with one of the effects of the climate change that is taking place, namely, the issue of deoxygenation in the ocean. Everybody is familiar with the concept of acidification, that about 30% of the CO2 ends up equilibrating into the ocean and causing its acidity to increase. This has to do with the loss of oxygen in the ocean. Any potentially volatile gas that is in solution in the ocean as the ocean warms, and about 93% of the heat from the pre-industrial age has gone into the ocean, that gas will tend to leave the water. It can't stay in solution. Any organism that uses oxygen in its metabolism is going to have an increased metabolism as the water warms up, and so that also decrements or decreases the amount of oxygen there. As more fresh water is melted off from glaciers and into the ocean, you tend to get stratification, and so there's not the mixing that will help mix the oxygen further down in. And finally, in fertilizer and sewage treatment plant runoff into the ocean and that increase of basically fertilizing elements, you then get an algal bloom, the algae die, they're metabolized, and all four of these processes tend to lower the amount of oxygen. And that means they're at risk, are finfish, shellfish. We're gonna start seeing manifestations, and in fact, the Pacific Northwest is a little bit at higher risk of this occurring. So another whole new phenomenon related to fossil fuels. The other issue I'll bring up has to do with wildfires. One of the hot issues, not really intended, in climate science is the idea of fractional attribution, trying to determine for any given event what proportion of that change was due to climate change. And it seems clear that a little bit more than half of the increased increase in wildfires that we are experiencing is actually due to the release of heat-trapping gases into the atmosphere. Historically, about 10% of the wildfires in this state occurred west of the Cascades.
Thirty seconds, please.
That's up more into the 25% range, and that should be increasing, where Asher-Garden Half start worrying about wildfires on this side. One of the teleconnections in climate change is that soot that is released from these wildfires, so in addition to the CO2 that's released, that soot, when it lands on snow, will then enhance the melting of snow as well. So yes, I'm in favor of continuing the moratorium for six months. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Barry Winger, Watcomb County, and specifically Bellingham. And thank you for hanging in here through this really difficult issue, but you're right on target as far as it needs to be addressed, and so I really support the moratorium and also the ordinance that's been proposed. I spent, well, I've spent 45 years of a career... I spent, well, I've spent 45 years of career, both in the private sector for local government and state government writing ordinances, as well as WACs, Washington Administrative Code, and RCW for the state. This is really a well-crafted ordinance, but for sure, anytime you enter this kind of new territory, there's going to be quibbling over the language, and every attorney comes out of, from the woodwork to argue with this word or that word. You are going to get that, from both sides probably, but that doesn't mean don't do it. You have to start somewhere. And even the earliest subdivision ordinances had missed all kinds of things, and after you use it for a little bit, all the parties come together, and you refine it, it gets better and better. The critical thing is get it done now, because we're at a critical juncture, not just in Watcomb County, the two refineries here, but also Skagit County, two more refineries, and then down in Tacoma, five refineries in Puget Sound. And it's a tipping point for Puget Sound. We really need to protect what we have here. Keep the jobs here in refining, keep that, those jobs going. I've heard for 45 years that this ordinance is going to kill us, it's going to ruin business, the sky is falling. Not once has it ever really happened. I understand people fear for their jobs, they get afraid of things, but that's not, that doesn't show leadership. You have to take a strong stand and move forward. The Shoreline Management Act was supposed to decimate shoreline property values in 1971. What happened? Just the opposite. Protected the things, protected the value of that property, those prices went skyrocketed. And so, the market is going to control a lot of that stuff. So I really urge you to keep going, and one of the things that's really important, to make it a transparent process. I was very disappointed when I worked at Department of Ecology, when I got the determination of non-significance for a rail yard at BP to get additional crude to come in, we all thought, okay, additional crude, they've been getting crude from rail, they get it from tankers, they get it from the pipeline, what's the big deal?
30 seconds, please.
Nothing in that DNS said this was going to be a completely different kind of product that's going to explode like gasoline, burn 10 times as hot, and explode even more because it has millions of particles of sand in it. So that DNS was not transparent. They knew what they were bringing here. It was not good, and we have these bomb trains coming through town. So anything changing this large arena of fossil fuels needs to be transparent and shared with the rest of the state. Thank you.
Virginia Malmquist, I live just, my husband and I live just south of Everson, out in the county. We recently did a road trip, and on that road trip, one of the things I noticed is we didn't once clean our windshield. We are well into the sixth extinction, and bugs are, one of the first things that we notice are gone. I don't know if you remember when you were a kid, those of you that are older, you didn't go anywhere but have, without having to clean your windshield on a regular basis. It was always smeared with bugs. We have to protect our world, and it is so critical that we step in and be the ones to do it. We cannot wait on the feds to do something. They're not going to protect us. And I support the moratorium, I support the ordinance that is proposed, in the hopes that we will do our part to be supporting of the earth as a whole. It takes all of us, and we cannot shirk our responsibility. Thank you.
My name is Debbie Cantrell. I'm a Bellingham resident and business owner, and I'm here to ask you to support the continued Over the past few years, I've seen one friend lose everything they have in an Okanagan fire. My sister lost her house in Hurricane Sandy, and had to demolish the home that she raised her children in. Another friend just had to go sift through the ashes in paradise and watch his 85-year-old parents relocate to an hour and a half away where they had no friends and no support to the little apartment, and that's where they were going to spend their days. They sifted through the ashes to find a couple of mementos that they could keep, and had no luck. We spent two weeks last summer with my grandchildren here, afraid to go outside because we couldn't breathe the smoke. And almost everybody I know has had upper respiratory health issues this year, and I've heard doctors say that it is exacerbated by the smoke that we threw last summer. I know that you can't point to one issue, one particular event, and say that it was caused by climate change, but it's getting a little bit hard to ignore. In light of the findings of the climate panel, since we have less than 12 years to turn this around, I just don't see how any responsible government can move in the direction of increased fossil fuel infrastructure. It just doesn't make any sense in its madness. I've read that there's groups of young people in Seattle creating support groups because they, they would like to think about having children, but they think it's a really bad idea. They like, are struggling with the idea of having a family, because it's so scary. A previous speaker said that it's not our job locally to tackle climate change. Well, our federal government, even though their own administration has come out with a report that's very similar to the UN panel, has shown that they're not going to do anything. They're reversing trends for gas mileage requirements and getting out of the Paris talks. The only way that we're going to turn this around is the local communities take the lead and show that we can support green energy jobs, and just end the madness of climate change.
Just before we start, this is a reminder, when you're using the microphone, if people could see if you can hear your own voice. If you can't, you're not close enough to the microphone. That is, if you can hear your voice on the PA. And then in addition to that, I'd like to call Andronetta Douglas, Katie Dexter, Robin Dexter, Antonio Mancherado, and Natalie McLendon.
Mike Senate, Bellingham. I sign myself in. I'd like to thank the council for passing previous moratoriums and considering this one. I'd like to welcome Carol to her first moratorium imbroglio, and hope that it's her last. I think it's an outcome we could all agree on. I'd like to note that the moratoriums have not caused extreme disruption or prevention of operations at the Cherry Point Industries, contrary to the claims made by refinery representatives and others. The renewable diesel project at BP was given a determination of non-significance in July of 2017, and is now operational, from what I understand. In August 2017, a massive stack was brought ashore at Gulf Road and installed at BP. Last September, a DNS was issued for an upgrade with a power substation servicing BP. Petrogas was permitted in 2016 to make improvements to its facility. In November last year, Philip 66 was granted a shoreline exemption permit to do work to inform future piling repair and causeway replacement at its terminal. The list goes on, and so does the work of maintaining the existing industries and servicing their operations under the terms of the moratorium. I want their operations to be safe, efficient, and profitable, and provide good jobs. I also want their negative impacts on the environment and the population to be held to the least possible minimums. Therefore, I urge the county council to adopt the new zoning amendments for Cherry Point that will replace the moratoriums with clearly defined permitting and provide greater public participation in that process. It'll call for increased transparency into the operation at Cherry Point that affect Watcomb County and its citizens. It requires the industry to be sufficiently insured in case of catastrophic scenarios. They might say it can't happen here, but it has, June 1999. I could see the 2012 BP fire from my house in Birch Bay, and heard it was touch-and-go for a while. The new rules will not permit any resuscitation of coal terminal schemes and prohibit any new peers at Cherry Point lining up with the state of Washington's prohibition. These rules will give the herring and salmon a better chance of reviving their depleted populations by protecting the Cherry Point Aquatic Reserve and the wider Salysh Sea. Thank you for taking my comments.
Evening. My name is Pete Romero. I've lived in Watcomb County since 1999 with my wife, and my kids, and now my grandkids. I live minutes from the Cherry Point industrial area. I can see the Philip 66 refinery from my home, right on my front porch there. I work for JH Kelly. I'm the regional manager. JH Kelly's a general mechanical contractor. We've been performing capital maintenance projects in all four refineries, and they're supporting industries in this area since the mid-'80s. I'm against the moratorium. I'm against this extension. I'm against Mr. Buchanan's verage change. Current regulations in place are enough. You know, there's means and methods, checks and balances for public review of any new proposal of any of the projects or maintenance out of these facilities. Furthermore, I view the real harm here as the impact this kind of regulatory, overreaching decision-making has on the reputation of the county council. Dealing with council is often seen by those regulated, by the decisions the council makes, as an unpleasant and difficult process at best. When the council takes an action which virtually any layperson can see is contrary to clear language of regulation, ordinance, or statute that undermines the public perception of the professionalism and fairness of this council, and in long term undermines the willingness of the public to accept regulations that are deemed necessary for the fair growth of industry, the protection of the general health, and the safety and welfare of the public. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Murphy. I've been a Watcomb County resident for 22 years. I'm a licensed professional engineer. I work at Philip 66 Ferndale Refinery as a turnaround manager, and in that role, I am involved in the management of the maintenance and in the capital program at the refinery. So I'm very much aware of how all of this affects our investors and our corporate people that approve the money to upgrade and to make the refinery more competitive, safer, and cleaner. I do want to make one point before I go on to, what I came here to say is that my dad was a forester and a district manager for the DNR his whole career, and he said 50 years ago, 40, 50 years ago, that the, in about this time, about 40 years, we're going to experience a lot of wildfires because of flawed environmental practices preventing management of our forest and building up fuel and causing bugs and everything, other things to kill the trees. That's what we're seeing now, not climate change. He was right. Point I want to make on 2019-064, do not move forward with yet another moratorium extension. It's been said by the council and others that the moratorium's purpose is to preserve jobs by preventing the refineries becoming export terminals. No refining company chooses to idle billions of dollars in existing infrastructure so that it can be reduced to a terminal. The only time that happens is when the business climate is not profitable and/or when the political climate is so hostile that it is too risky spending investment in the facility any longer. The Watcomb County Council by this moratorium is contributing to both a nonprofital and politically hostile business climate. So the actions of the council by passing this moratorium again and again and again is contributing to the very thing that they claim they want to prevent. There has never been a problem that this moratorium would solve that the current permitting process doesn't already address. Resolution 2018-015. On January 15th, the council voted to send expansive changes to the comp plan to the planning committee. These changes were drafted by Donovan, Stan, Earth, and Resources. This is déjà vu. It wasn't that long ago that I was standing here, right after Carl Weimer did the same thing. We've been here before. The proposed changes are egregious and completely unnecessary. They target any project that proposes modifying, upgrading, or building new facilities for handling, storing, and processing fossil fuels, in other words, refineries.
30 seconds, please.
These proposed changes require conditional use permits and corresponding EIS in all fossil fuel facilities and accessory uses in the Cherry Point area. This proposal obviously has a very radical political agenda behind it and targets a select type of industry. It is anti-business, anti-economy, anti-energy, anti-jobs, and anti-environment. Recently, Philip 66 announced a joint venture with Renewable Energy Group to build a renewable biofuel plant to provide a green, high-quality biofuel. Washington State is excited to see this facility built, but with an obviously hostile county council toward investment in Cherry Point, well, investors want to continue to invest here. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I am Antonio Machado. I live in Ferndale, three miles away from the Philip 66 Ferndale Refinery. That's where I work at. I am the crude and LPG scheduler for the refinery. I married a native from the Pacific Northwest. We have three beautiful children. I was born and raised in Mexico City. My background is petroleum. My dad a chemical engineer in the Mexican Oil Company. So firsthand, I have experienced other refineries, not only in Mexico, but in the world, and I can tell you with the utmost assurance that we have in this area some of the safest, cleanest, most efficient refineries, not only in the US, but in the world. Cherry Point is the job center of the county, and 11% of all county jobs are directly or indirectly related to Cherry Point industrial activities. Cherry Point companies create over 2,100 jobs that pay an average salary of over $144,000 a year. Cherry Point Industries pay over $200 million in annual taxes that fund schools, first responders, and libraries. Passing unnecessary regulations will harm their ability to operate. I know that the energy industry provides energy and improves our livelihood. Because of what we do and how we do it, we're able to increase our life expectancy, we're able to improve our environmental surroundings. We think that the resolution 2018 is bad for Watcomb County. Do not extend the fossil fuel permit moratorium for the sixth time. Do not move forward with proposed changes to the Watcomb Comp Plan and Watcomb County Code relating to Cherry Point. Current regulations are enough. There are many checks and balances in place for public review of any proposal for Cherry Point, whether it's related to energy or something else. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kathy Dexter, and I've been a resident of Watcomb County since 1971, and I was a schoolteacher here in Watcomb County for over 30 years, in Linden and in Ferndale, so I might have had some of these fine folks as students. And I'm also a grandmother. I have seven grandkids. So my perspective is that, I mean, I wake up every morning and I wish climate change wasn't real, you know? I wish that we weren't seeing all these storms, and I wish I didn't have to explain these things to my grandkids. But I look at them, and I don't know, you know, if the, if the earth is going to be sustainable enough for them to ever have kids. So, climate change is real. I really, really, really wish it wasn't, but I think that we don't have any choice but to responsibly make decisions. Every decision we make should be based on, is this going to help our planet, or is this going to be a step backward? And the other thing I would say is I know the issue of jobs has come up over and over again tonight, and I think that it's important for us, and I tried to teach my students this, that, that the world that, that your kids are going to be living in, probably they're going to end up having jobs in green energy, or marine industries, or, you know, building boats, or hopefully there will still be a tourism industry here in Washington State. So there's a lot of other jobs that we can get kids ready for in the future. But anyway, thank you for listening.
And just before you get going, Pam Brady, Sean Kayla, Holly Johnson, Jim Verberg.
Hi, my name is Andronetta Douglas, and, excuse me. My name is Andronetta Douglas. I live in Bellingham. I did live up by Birch Bay, in Birch Bay, by the BP plant for three years. I'm a retired RN. I have a granddaughter who grew up by BP, and she has asthma. I have lymphocytic leukemia, chronic lymphocytic leukemia, which is associated with benzene. That's a pollutant that we have in this area, around the refineries. So I support Todd Donovan and Sat Paul Sidhu's proposal, and I encourage you to continue the moratorium. To the enormous uncertainties about climate change, we don't know how much food production will decrease in the next 50 years, but the estimates are 10 to 50%. There was an article out in 2006, I think, from the National Geographic saying that fish food, the food that we take from the ocean will be gone by 2048. These things are canaries in the coal mine. It was heartbreaking watching the orca mother carrying her baby up and down the coast with her dead baby. But you need to know on top of that, we get most of our oxygen from the ocean, and there is a We may be watching them starve to death or suffocate to death if we do not take this on and solve this problem soon. I know you all know this already, but I think it needs to be stated that our children may be dying because we don't take this on. And I, as a nurse, worked in pediatric intensive care. I have seen children die of suffocation because their lungs stop working. But that can happen simply because there's not enough oxygen in our air. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Hi, Natalie McLendon, unincorporated in Waukam County, also planning commissioner representing District Five. I wasn't really going to come tonight. I figure I'm going to hear all this again in a month or so at the planning commission, but I won't be able to talk there, express my own opinion, so I'll give you some today. The Wall Street Journal auto columnist, Dan Neal, recently wrote that buying a new internal combustion engine car would be a big mistake, the equivalent of buying a flip phone in a smartphone world. The purchase of electric vehicles is growing exponentially. Battery prices for electric vehicles have fallen 85% since 2010. The cost of EVs will be equivalent or cheaper than internal combustion cars in five years. We are facing disruptive technologies here in the passenger and transportation sector. We can argue all we want about climate change, but it will not stop the forces of the free market and technological innovation that will make the refineries we're arguing about today here in Waukam County obsolete in less than 10 years. 90% of the current output of the BP refinery is for gasoline. BP itself, rebranded itself some decades ago to go from British Petroleum, which people probably remember, to beyond petroleum. They are diversified, and Waukam County needs to be diversified too. Meanwhile, we continue to have pretty much a prohibition against wind power in this county because we've zoned it out of all areas except for Cherry Point industrial area. We're talking about 100-year-old technology that is on its way out. We need to enter the 21st century. I mean, I'm anxious to get beyond this issue. When it comes to the planning commission, I will do my due diligence to review the proposals, but I'm concerned about what we're going to have regardless of what we pack up here tonight or in the next few months. We're using a huge amount of energy, time, multiple hearings, and we're not dealing with the 20-year outlook of our economic and employment base. I support the moratorium. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Robin Dexter, Bellingham. I am in support of this extension of the moratorium, and I'm also, I want to speak in favor of the resolution, the, what, it's on my sheet, is Brown Donovan Sidhu. And also thank you for this tonight. I know everybody's wandered a little far off the subject, but this has been something important for everyone to express. I will leave you with, I want to remind you of a couple things. I believe this is mainly about understanding our risk with regard to the shipment of oil. As Barry pointed out, the nature of oil has changed. I think it's important to stay focused on why we've had a moratorium and why we're going to extend it, and why we're going to change the language in the comp plan. And it is, we're undergoing the same thing. I'm a Barron's reader. Natalie reads the Wall Street Journal. I read Barron's. And the entire issue was devoted to how the very corporations that own the refineries at Cherry Point and all the other Fortune 500 companies are undergoing, trying to understand their own risk profile with regard to how the climate is changing. I mean, that's not a radical paper, people. That's Barron's. So I don't believe for a minute that any of us on either side of this are out to remove anyone's job. I know that's not true. I know that when I was chased to Alaska as a fisherman because I could no longer make a living in Puget Sound, I, there's nobody I want to blame for that. I mean, my friends still work turnaround at the refinery. So we're not here to take away jobs, but we do need to understand the risk profile of this new fuel, and we need to come up with our own understanding of our risks with regard to climate change, just the way the owners of the refineries are doing. So, thank you. Thank you for sticking with the process, and let's just see it through. All these people that are concerned about their future are going to have the same opportunity to come to a planning commission and ultimately to another hearing here. But we owe it to our children to be good stewards of the earth, and we better get on with it. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the council this evening. My name is Jim Verberg. I'm a Washington native. I'm a total 24-year resident of Waukam County. I graduated Western Washington University. I currently reside in Linden with my wife and my wonderful wife, my wonderful 12-year-old daughter. I'm here to oppose the existing moratorium, as well as the January 15th comp plan amendments. And with all due respect, I haven't had a chance to read the latest amendments from today, but I remain concerned about some of the language in those as well. I've had a really interesting 26-year career after, you know, with the exception of a five-year period in the public sector. I've spent 21 years working in technical and environmental fields at two of the industries in the Cherry Point UGA. Worked at IntalcO, and I work at BP Cherry Point Refining. At BP, I work in the environmental department, and I work with amazing and capable and talented team of people. They care about the environment. They care about safety, and it's nothing more dear to our hearts than that. A key aspect of my current role, and so I'm going to speak to you a little bit about as a person that has to go out and get permits, is I work with colleagues to secure permits from everything from parking lots to new and more efficient equipment. We deal in a world of really complex and intricate rules with acronyms like MPDS, MACHA, RICRA, SEPA, BACT, RAC, PSD, B1, SBCC, LDR, NICEPS, and the list goes on and on. It's really complex. We deal with all forms of media, but I love my job. I get to problem-solve by working with internal stakeholders, expert colleagues from start to finish on large and small projects, and then I get to work with some really good permitting staff at various agencies, including Waukam PDS, Northwest Clean Air Agency, Department of Ecology, and others. And in the end, although things are complicated, the current regulations at the local and federal level and state level are well-established and very adequate to address a lot of concerns that I see contained in some of these drafts. It's not always easy, but at least there's a pathway to obtaining permits. It's difficult. Things get challenged. There's spirited debate. But at this point, looking at the comp plan amendments, this subverts the existing processes. And I don't understand what the end game is, to be honest with you. I thought it was to prevent fossil fuel exports, and there's existing concerns with that. But now it's also to, it seems like it's targeted to put us out of business just with the language that's there. And so I remain opposed to this. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, council members. I'm Pam Brady. I live in Bellingham, and I work in external affairs at BP Cherry Point Refinery. And on behalf of BP, thank you for the opportunity to provide comments regarding the sixth extension of the Unrefined Fossil Fuels Moratorium. I've been here on behalf of the business five other times on the same subject, and BP remains in opposition to the county's ongoing extension of the moratorium. We believe it is unwarranted, and these repeated extensions are unreasonable and in violation of relevant statutory requirements. The council's recent actions during the January 15th special committee of the whole meeting are inconsistent with the good faith requirements in RCW 36.70.790. The amendments constitute a significant departure from the prior proposed amendments that the council had been working on, a drafting process the public reasonably expected would be continued in a public forum. Instead, council voted four to two with one abstention to send recommendations to the planning commission that, if enacted, would violate the due process rights of the established businesses in Waukam County, and that would have the effect of bringing permitting at Cherry Point to a standstill, requiring conditional use permits over virtually everything in the Cherry Point UGA, as well as an EIS, and tying up projects indefinitely. This is an overreach and a distortion of SEPA for the benefit of a few at the expense of the whole. Most disheartening is that council voted to make these recommendations despite numerous protestations that they were in fact protecting Cherry Point jobs by seeking to prevent new fossil fuel export projects. The truth has been revealed. The moratorium is but a pretext to deny permits for the refineries for regular operations and maintenance needs. And this will impact the existing infrastructure, as well as the ability of the refineries to fully participate in the energy transition, including the production of renewables and advanced biofuels. Our recommendation is the council revoke this damaging proposal and begin again. It is clear that the drafters of the comp planned recommendations don't understand the very permitting framework they are proposing to alter, and they don't understand the implications on the county or the regulated parties. It's also clear that the county would benefit from some good legal advice from people experienced in permitting. This expertise exists within the county's own PDS staff, in the county's legal department, and in the government at other levels, including the Northwest Clean Air Agency and the Department of Ecology. It also exists in the private sector. And we would welcome the opportunity to work with the council and the staff to educate decision-makers on this process and ensure business growth in Waukam County. Thousands of concerned citizens have taken the time to comment on the council's actions with respect to Cherry Point, and we respectfully ask that you restore Cherry Point Industries' lawful right to apply for and have processed any land use and development permit that is authorized under county code. Thank you.
Before you go, Pat Simmons, Terry Montoyo, I think it is, Rob Hutchinson, Chad Bachozen, Michael Kirschbaum, and Michelle Gitz.
Good evening. My name is Holly Johnson, and I represent Western States Petroleum Association. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. WISPA is a nonprofit trade association that represents energy companies that do business here in Washington. WISPA member companies that you've heard from today operate refineries along the Cherry Point and have so for years. I'm here today to speak to you about the sixth extension of the Unrefined Fossil Fuels Moratorium. As we have expressed five other times to this council, we have grave concerns with the county council's use of an interim moratorium. We believe this continued use is an inappropriate way for the county to regulate existing businesses on what is apparent to be a permanent broader restriction on all fossil fuels. I would encourage you to read our full comments submitted via email earlier today, as well as the five other times we have submitted comments on this issue. It is our belief that our environment, our prosperity, and our progress towards a sustainable energy future are all best served by collaborative relationships and inclusive dialogue. WISPA and our member companies have engaged in a two-year dialogue with the council in good faith, and during this time have been assured by the council that the purpose of the moratorium was to allow the council time to draft limitations on export of unrefined fossil fuels and not to impact existing businesses. The new January 15th proposed comprehensive plan amendments, and as far as I can tell with the tonight's resolution, far exceed the stated intention, and the effect of these amendments on local businesses will be substantial. Through the actions of the council with the January 15th comp plan amendments, council has expanded its two-year interim moratorium on the export of unrefined fossil fuels to a broader restriction on all fossil fuel facilities. It is our belief that council has violated its commitment to the industrial businesses when it made the sudden decision without prior notice to consider comprehensive plan amendments that will restrict the ability of all fossil fuel businesses to obtain permits for their facilities. WISPA would also like to express its concerns about the lack of transparency and haste with which the January 15th comprehensive plan amendments and tonight's resolution were brought forward for consideration. WISPA urges the council to review our formal comments and allow the current moratorium to expire without further renewal, and we urge the council to not move forward with proposed changes to the Waukam County Comp Plan and county code changes related to Cherry Point at this time. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Hello. My name is Sean Kayler. I'm a resident of Waukam County, and I live in the city of Bellingham with my wife and four children. I currently work at the BP Cherry Point Refinery as a mechanical engineer. In fact, I sit in the very same desk that your son used to sit in. And prior to that, I had the pleasure of working at the Phillips 66 refinery, so I feel like another refinery's run here. And I'm here to say that I oppose the moratorium. And what I'm hearing today, this evening, is two things, is really, there's a lack of trust in the room. There's a lack of trust with this council and the behaviors that they've exhibited in the last few months. And it's disheartening. And the reason it's disheartening is, prior to working in Washington, I worked in Oklahoma, and I also worked in California. And in California, I got to witness firsthand how local ordinances began to become enshrined in the politics. And suddenly, the local politicians thought that they knew how to run refineries, and they thought that they knew the business. And it made the permitting systems very complex at the refineries. And I saw firsthand a good project, an LPG recovery unit, that would reduce emissions, it would clean up fuel gas, and it would recover it as a usable product, butane, which I'm sure you see in lighters and what have you. That project was killed. It was not built in California, it was built in Oklahoma. So I saw the jobs that went with that project go away. And why did it go away? Not because of necessary regulation, but the toxic environment that was created by laws, by changes of ordinances done, not in the open public environment where professionals can weigh in, engineers, lawyers, politicians even. But what I saw was a toxic environment created by this sort of bait-and-switch attitude where an ordinance was presented and then the language was changed multiple times. And so I'd encourage us to foster an environment of trust and openness. If you truly intend to keep jobs here, and your intent is to prevent export of crude oil or the expansion of refineries, if that's your true intent, then it should become forth, and it should not be buried in the language that was recently presented, which would make simple endeavors such as even changing a handrail out. You laugh. I saw that in California, become a county permit. We don't want that environment. It's not beneficial to you, it's not beneficial to us. Thank you for your time.
Hello, council members. My name is Pat Simons. I'm a citizen of Waukam County, community volunteer. I'm a proud employee of BP Cherry Point Refinery. As it relates to comments I'm making tonight, I'm also an experienced and degreed environmental engineer. My current role at BP is I'm the department manager for projects and turnarounds, whereby I look after many of the investments that BP makes in the refinery, which would come to the many local, state, and federal agencies for permission to be built, including, for example, our investment in renewable diesel. Second role, which I weigh as very important, is speaking to you on behalf of many concerned Cherry Point employees and families who are affected by the decision-making processes of this body. With past assurance that you in no way intended to harm the business viability of Cherry Point businesses, here you are to vote yet again on another emergency moratorium extension. What's new... What's new is the publication of the January 15th, 2019 Comprehensive Plan Proposal, conditional use throughout, what it means for us and for the community and beyond. So first, for some of those that are seated here today that have voted and participated with courage and support of Cherry Point Industries, I'd like to thank you personally for your courage and for bringing balance to bear in a difficult local, state, and national time of very polarizing politics. For those that are new to the council, I'd like to urge you to think independently and wisely, not with the extremists. I'd also like to extend again the offer of true collaboration with all stakeholders, as opposed to pretend collaboration or collaboration only with favorite stakeholders. Second, in the last several times into this chamber, those of us speaking on behalf of Cherry Point Industry were addressed by council with verbal assurances from the voting majority, some present and some now gone, which could be generalized as follows: We hear you, trust us, we're not trying to shut down Cherry Point Industry, we're trying to preserve your jobs, and we value your place here. Your latest document to which I referred calls this into question, calls into question the sincerity and public transparency of those words. If followed through upon, the assurances of the past would certainly turn out to be false. I'd like to humbly request that you reconsider your path. Third, while not speaking to the intentionality of that action, I have the following comment about investment. Injecting uncertainty into the ability to invest in this county with confidence-
Thirty seconds, please.
... results in less investment, period. You know, we have about 100 permits and plans governing our business, we interact with something like 25 agencies. At any given time, we're working diligently to do right by all the requirements placed upon us, with a substantial benefit not only in what we do, because it's important, and it's good work. A lot more to say, but I only got three minutes. So thanks for your time in considering this. I'm opposed to yet another emergency moratorium, and I'm definitely against what you put forward in that January 15th note. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Rob Hutchinson. I live in Watcom, I've lived in Watcom County for 28 years, and I'm currently a proud employee of BP. One of the great aspects of working at BP is we are always looking towards the future. Rarely is there not a project being worked that either makes our site safer, more efficient, and more recently furthers our goal of being leaders in renewable energy. Businesses in this county can be frontrunners in the effort to move towards cleaner fuels. This movement will likely be led by major energy companies, because these companies have access to capital and have already demonstrated their scalability in delivering energy on a global scale. We have the money, we have the infrastructure, and we have the resources to make this happen, but it takes time. We also need to continue to meet society's demands for the products we make, so that all the people sitting in this room and beyond can continue contributing to building up our society as we continue to transition towards cleaner fuels. And everyone here can be a part of this transition. The behavior by this county council in recent years, and especially the past few months, puts our goals at risk. On January 15th, 2019, just a few weeks ago, the council voted and sent last-minute expansive comp plan changes to the Watcom Planning Commission that had not been reviewed by the council. These changes were drafted by Councilmember Donovan, Stand Earth, and Resources. These changes expand conditional use permits for all fossil fuel facilities, refined and unrefined. I'd like to read a couple of comments that were made by County Executive Jack Laus. A couple of, a few of this stuff has already been mentioned tonight, but I'll just quote a few of his comments. "In practice, this proposal, if lawful, which I would change, which I would challenge, I'm sorry, would deal what I would consider a knockout punch to the future capital repair and maintenance projects at the refineries, notwithstanding any consideration of major renovation projects." He went on to say the January 15th proposal, in his opinion, is a true job killer. I agree with Executive Laus on this. Cherry Point Industries are an important part of this community. They pay over $200 million in annual taxes that fund schools, first responders, and libraries. They also create over 2,100 jobs. 11% of all county jobs are directly or indirectly-
Seconds, please.
-related to Cherry Point Industries. Half of the homes on Mike Street in Linden fall into this category. It seems the curtain has been pulled on the council's true intentions for Cherry Point. As you consider your decision tonight, please be aware that good citizens, taxpayers, and voters are watching closely, and we are very concerned. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Michael Kirshenbaum. I'm a resident of Watcom County. I just want to say, this is obviously a complex process, and take your time, you know, do it right. It obviously impacts our health, it impacts a lot of people's jobs, it impacts the declining orca and salmon runs, and of course, everyone wants to come to solution right away, but if this takes a while to hear and to think about and to do various iterations, then take your time. I support the moratorium, but I more support the council's efforts to be diligent, not to feel rushed, however much intense emotion there is on all sides around this, to get this right, because it's important and it'll set a precedent and hopefully be something that can be upheld and defended for a long time. So thank you for your effort and listening to everyone this evening.
Just before you go, I'm going to call the next few names here. Michelle Gitz, Michael Petrisch, Mike Luellen, Trevor Smith, and Brooks Turner. Just kind of head down with you. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. Gentlemen of the council, Ms. Carroll, Ms. Barber, ma'am. My name's Chad Bunshon. I live in Linden, Washington. And to make this brief, as I'm not a public speaker, nor do I possess the knowledge that some of the others in this room do, let me start by saying that I believe what you're attempting to do is protect the local environment. Right? That is something that everyone in this room can agree is a good thing. However, I just completely disagree with the manner in which you're doing it. Permitting and regulation compliance on the fossil fuel industry, greenhouse gas analysis, control on expansion and local environmental impact studies are all something we as residents not only appreciate, but expect from our local government. And now here's where we disagree. By overregulating and crippling our local business from being competitive on the world market, we're not only hurting ourselves, but performing a major discredit to the environment as a whole. If the businesses at Cherry Point fail to remain fluid, evolve, and adapt to their competitors both nationally and overseas, they will have no option but to close. And if continuous red margins evolve from this, they will close. It's undeniable, they're not going to stay open. The products that we are producing here will be produced at some other facility in the world that I'm sure will fail to meet the standards regarding environmental impact that ours do. Our companies are the envy of those around the nation, and aren't even in the same category of those overseas. This whole notion that what happens outside of Watcom County fails to affect us is absurd. You're building a straw man. The body's there, just there's no brain. Why are we not lifting our local companies, helping them expand, assisting them with permits to import and export as much as they can, allowing them to become the best in the world and showing all of America and the world, by local government and the oil and gas industry working together, we can have a flourishing economy and minimal environmental impact. But instead, we choose to regulate, hinder production, stifle growth and expansion, and make it nearly impossible for some of the cleanest energy-producing facilities in the world, in the world, to be competitive. You're breaking-
Thirty seconds, please.
... Seppes' leg and blaming him for not winning the race. That's it. You can be part of something amazing, you can have the chance to participate firsthand in developing plans that create jobs, protect the environment, expand on the economy, and bring new businesses into Watcom County, all by sitting down with the people that are in this room. We're all here. You'll be a trendsetter for not only the rest of the state, but the rest of the nation as well. Show them how to do it right, how to do it fair, and how to do it clean. Thank you.
Just a reminder, no applause or negative comments on any speaker, thank you. We're down to, who was that one?
Terry. Oh.
Remember, can you please, can you please move up to the podium? Yeah, thank you.
I'm Terry Montana, and I'm a retarded Coast Guard Fish Cop, retired Coast Guard Fish Cop, and who has served as provisional chairman of the Fishers Caucus on a planning unit for, I guess, four or five years. And in the process, I did a lot of research, read a lot of books, talked to a lot of people, and came up with a one-page brief on North Puget fish and fishers back. I'm thinking of guys like Robin, who had to leave because our fish left, and we'd like to get them back. And I have a procedure here that's very environmentally responsible, that can bring our wild kings and silvers and sockeyes back down, or you know, get them back so that they return up to spawn where they're born. The problem is that they're being intercepted, and fundamentally due to the internal combustion engine. And so it just, I'm here because in this report, I mention Cherry Point three times. And the first point is, clean coal, GPT, preserving Arctic ice, cope pods, salmon prey eat, and farm shellfish due to less acid rain out of Asia. In other words, you haven't been talking about the clean coal terminal, but the clean coal terminal could do the Pacific a lot of good, because it's putting a lot of pollution into the Pacific, it goes up through the Bering Strait, it's wiping out a lot of ice in the Arctic, and it's also affecting our fish here in Puget Sound. And the next place I mention it is, let's see, oh, in 10 or so years too, halibut, herring, and other bottom and forage feeders would return as new eelgrass slant herring-enhancing docks at Cherry Point are created. And finally, the bottom line, add clean coal, light crude, and LNG exports. In other words, we're not going to be transporting crude oil through here, we refine it and then transport it via buoyed one-way routes to and from Cherry Point.
Thirty seconds, please.
And salmon, orcas, fishers, farms, tribes, refineries, factories, canneries, jobs, housing, and a new jail would all benefit as Asians no longer process 94% of seafood Americans eat. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Gitz. I strongly oppose the moratorium. I'm a lifetime student, or sorry, a lifetime resident of Watcom County. My grandpa retired from Alcoa and Telco Cherry Point, and my family owns a business, and before that, my grandpa did. So I've lived here a long time, and my family has. I wasn't going to speak tonight, I didn't really write anything, but I wanted to share something that hasn't been mentioned. I go to Bellingham Technical College, and I'm in the Process Technology Program. I am hopefully going to be a future operator at one of these refineries. From my class, in Sprint Techs, the welders, all the people that are investing in their education, we are investing in this community, we're investing in Cherry Point. Please don't limit our futures, allow these businesses to transition to green with us instead of limiting us. I also work for a contractor that works in environmental at BP. And I think a lot of people that are against refineries or fossil fuels would be surprised to know how very strict the permits are and how very strict the environmental regulations are. So although I'm going in an operations role that I'm trying to be eventually, I also still very much care about the environment, as everyone does and as does everyone at Cherry Point. So you should look into how strict it already is and not continue to impose these things and work together with these companies.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brooks Tarter, and I'm a proud member of Laborers Local 292. I've lived here in Watcom County for the last three years, and I've worked at the Cherry Point Refinery and in also Shell and in the Pacific Northwest area. I've been at P66 and now Marathon for the last five years. The work that we laborers do in the refineries is critical to keeping the plants running safely and cleanly. Our scope of work, along with all of the building trades, makes some of the safest and cleanest refineries in the country. They were talking about safety earlier. My reason I am in the process of going into safety because of the refineries and what their requirements are. Not only are they trying to be safe, but they are also trying to clean. With you cutting out the jobs and trying to shut down the different process and the expanding, to be able to roll with the times and become more green, you're limiting everything. Let me leave you with these questions. Why have you gone from the original process of keeping the game plan to shutting down refineries? Also, with the uncertainty of potential work and the closing of the, because of the closing of the major refineries, I've watched my workability, the job access, drop in the last five years. How are you planning on keeping money within the community and the county? Because people are going to leave because there is no work. They're not going to be, the ones that live here will not be able to pay the taxes, which do pay your salaries. How will you get paid if no one lives here to pay the taxes? Thank you.
Good evening, councilors, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike Luellen, and I want to speak to you tonight on behalf of the brothers and sisters and families of Laborers Local 292. We have been attending these meetings and listening to discussions over extending the moratorium at Cherry Point and the changes to the comp plan. We have voiced our opposition to the moratorium changes and to the comp plan, all of the all being consistent and transparent in our message. Our feeling at this point is the council has not been transparent and is showing inconsistencies in their motives and agendas. The moratorium started out with a call to safety for the citizens of Watcom County, a safe environment, a safe Watcom County. We never disputed that, the importance of the safety. We did dispute the investigation into safety, the accuracy of the data presented and the lack of the proof of non-compliance to current codes, processes, and regulations at Cherry Point. We have spent months, now years, listening to the agenda by the council with only extensions to show for everyone's time, now multiple revisions to the comp plan. Over the holiday shutdown, Councilman Donovan crafted up new language of the comp plan, drastically changing the intent to the comp plan presented October 9th, 2018, and working only with one group's ideological outside of the council within Watcom County. Councilman Donovan then presented the language at the meeting of the whole, and in our opinion, shoved it right through to a vote. We have heard that some of the council had not read through the entire report and that not all questions were answered. Yet, a vote was still taken and passed by a slim margin. The vote total did raise some curiosity. Historically, the council's voted 5-2 in favor of the extension of the previous comp plans. This vote was different. We had four yeses, two no's, and one abstain. Kind of weird. The abstain vote is the one in question. That goes previously voters and commentary of the council. This really made us question the transparency and consistency of the council to the citizens of Watcom County. It further makes us wonder if the agendas are at play besides the safety of Watcom County citizens and their environment. We also read the response from Jack Laus, county executive. Hopefully, everyone from the council has read his response. As someone stated earlier, I quote, "In practice, this proposal, if lawful, I would challenge, would deal what would be considered a knockout punch to the future capital repair and maintenance projects at the refineries, notwithstanding any consideration of-"
Thirty seconds, please.
"- any-" All right. At this point, the inconsistencies and lack of transparency the council has shown to the citizens of Watcom County, we ask that all further votes of the moratorium and comp plan be put on hold till the public opinion has been heard. Furthermore, the council needs to provide proof to the citizens of Watcom County, and said language is their legal right to propose and fall under the responsibility and jurisdiction duty of the Watcom County Council. We need to bring back the topics, back to the original focus, and a safe environment and a safe Watcom County. Thank you.
Just before you do, Hannah Holt, Michael Gallegos, Jacob Pender, and Michael McGill Perry- Jacob Henderson, Michael Miguel Perry, Andrew Gamble and Bill Holt. Thank you.
Can I make a request?
What's that?
Can we take like, I hate to do this to people, can we take a five-minute break? I really gotta go. Sorry.
Well, you're welcome to do what you wish, Ms. Brenner.
I don't want to miss anybody. Anybody okay with taking a five-minute break?
No, I'd like to keep going. So with that, Mr. Smith.
Run.
Well, it's not about running. He's before me even. I'll wait till he comes back.
Mr. Smith.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Trevor Smith. I live on Roland Street. My grandparents live up in Ridgemont. My daughter and my son-in-law live over on West Illinois Street. My dad lives on, on Cedarwood. Third generation in this place. I got grandkids coming, hopefully soon, not too soon, but soon. Anyway, I think you all know what we're here for. I'm a proud member of Laborers Local 292. I'm a business agent, represent some 1,300 members, the majority of which work in and out of the refineries up here. We want to again bring to your attention our objection to the proposed Cherry Point moratorium and the language that Councilman Donovan further proposed at the last regular council meeting on January 15. So far, the continued kicking of the can down the road with the proposed sixth renewal of the temporary moratorium is not only causing an uncertain regulatory environment for the plants inside the Cherry Point heavy industrial zone, it's also putting our jobs at risk. With this uncertainty, projects have been put on hold. Because at this point, no one is sure what the regulatory environment is currently, let alone what it'll be next week. On top of the temp moratorium, Councilman Donovan, with assistance from a small group here in town, crafted a draft comp plan that the public wasn't allowed to see or comment upon, unlike the rest of the comp plan changes that had been going on for almost two years at that point. There was no real public out, input from this. We, as the people who work out there and live here, we feel like we should, we have a stake in this. These are our jobs. We live here. This is, this is our homes. This is our futures. We feel like we've been kind of kept out of this whole thing, like we were given a chance to, to comment for almost two years on the previous moratoriums and on the previous changes to the comp plan. And then this comes along, no comment, vote it. And that's really worrisome. You people represent us. We represent you guys when we're out, right? We're all part of this community. We hope that everybody has a voice in this community, whether it's us or those that are on the other side of it. We hope everybody has a voice and that's what we're asking for. The, I did read Mr. Brown's resolution. I got it before the meeting. I did read through it. And while we do like some of the changes that are in there and we appreciate the work that you put into it to try and come to some sort of a resolution, we think it just serves to highlight the haste in which this whole thing has happened.
Thirty seconds, please.
Do believe that this needs to be not extending the moratorium, not passing the amendment. Go back to the drawing board, get the public involved, get all the stakeholders involved, not just one part of it, all of it. It affects the entire county and affects all of us. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. Michael Petrus, Carpenter's Local 70 out of Mount Vernon. I represent 1,800 carpenters in the five northern counties of the state of Washington. A lot of us have done work up here at BP and ConocoPhillips, as well as down in Anacortes, Skidwick County as well. I come here tonight representing our members, not to mention the laborers that are here, the electricians that are here, the pipe fitters that are here, the ironworkers that are here. We are the ones that do the expansion in these, in these refineries. And the longer that this moratorium continues, the less work that we have for the expansion to upgrade those facilities that's mandated by the federal government. This council has failed the communities that we live in. Their inaction or continued action jeopardizes our work. Now, some of the things that I've listened to tonight about salmon habitat, about forest fires, well, let's talk about forest fires. That's a gross mismanagement of a natural resource, whether it be here in the state of Washington or in British Columbia. Talk about salmon habitat. You want salmon to return to the streams and return to the rivers, you better get the net side of the rivers. Let's have a serious conversation about real habitat if you want to come up with real solutions. Now, for those of us that are here that do the work in these refineries and the incomes that we make, impact our communities with the taxes that we, that we pay. You want tax revenue? Well, how are you going to collect revenue if nobody's paying taxes? These are the issues that we bring forth that are important to us. Safety is important to us. We go into these refineries, yeah, they boil oil 24/7. It's dangerous to work there. But those of us that work there and the people that are employed there full-time know the risk. And we work very hard to work out for each, for one another. And the refineries do the same. They're committed to safety. They're committed to protecting the environment. This is why we work here. This is our home. This is our backyard. We want to protect the environment. But at the same time, we cannot restrict those industries that provide work for us, that provide the tax revenues that we pay to the communities, for our schools, for our parks, the communities that we volunteer in. These are the dollars that we give back for our locals. We have charities that we donate to. All that money comes from our, those dollars that are generated.
Thirty seconds, please.
We come here tonight because we know how important it is that you hear our voice because we're the ones that do the work. Everybody's talking about safety. Well, we understand how, what the impact that it is because our lives are directly affected by it. It's time for this council to remove this moratorium and let us do our job and let the industries prove that they can protect the environment and provide for the economy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Michael Gallegos. You were close though. I'm so glad you made it back.
Well, I wanted to just say, I did get to hear most of what the fellow said because there's a microphone back there.
1631.
I think we all hope there's not a microphone back there.
We were, we were. About 1631, remember? Our group started that. Our group didn't like the way it went, so we did not endorse it. It did not pass. Some years back, you may have been here, you may not have been here. But I marched in here with 10,000 signatures wanting Gateway Pacific Terminal to be built, a dry bulk commodities. I don't care about coal. Would have provided jobs. 66 to 67% of the people that we had signatures for wanted that place built to bring industry to Cherry Point. Those wishes were not met. Incidentally, I don't appreciate the electoral process. One vote, one man, one woman. Transparency is such a glib word, huh? 1984, I'm not transparent? I've been on three different boards. I've been a director of three different boards, some of the best boards, two of them, some of the best in the country. We did everything above board so that everybody could see it. When our committee was done, everybody had the facts. Nothing was done hidden. If you hide from the public your duties, if you're on a committee, you should recuse yourself from any voting. And yes, Mr. Donovan, I'm speaking of you. You should recuse yourself from voting. Unless you did it in a committee environment where all the correct people were brought to the table. 1631, didn't work. We kind of shot it down. We're glad it didn't move forward. Same people that voted or wanted 66% of the citizens here in this county, in every major city in this county, it didn't go forward. Okay. But I see here seven people representing 100% of my county and those 66 to 67% are not being represented. Transparency is important. People have to believe you. You asked in one of the meetings, why was it that you weren't trusted? Perhaps the last verbiage gave us the reason why. Safety, every refinery, number one priority for them is safety. Every person out here that works at that refinery in any one of the four refineries has carte blanche to make me do it correctly, to keep our environment safe.
Just before you do, I have three more signed up. Bob Gay, Eddie Urie and Brooks Anderson. I just ask you to line up on this side. Oh, that's fine. Good. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Hannah. I've been up here a few times now. I just want to say for one, for the safety that has been brought up, we actually have safety employees in the refineries. And every once a week, we have a safety meeting and we talk about, we go through every refinery, not even just the one you're at. We go through every refinery and we talk about what we could fix that didn't happen so we can prevent that. And then every month, we have a safety, we have a safety meeting every month also with the entire, everybody, all the operators and everyone out in the refineries. Back in October, I went to a women's conference and there were 2,300 women there. It was in Seattle and it was all women that work in the union. You can have, anyone. And scaffold builders, carpenters, laborers, pipes, pipe fitters. And at least half of those women do work in the refineries too. And there was actually some stories that were said. And there was a woman that had three kids homeless on the streets and the people in her union, they actually came to her and gave her a place to stay, gave her a job. And she now bought her house and paid for everything for the kids by herself, single mom, no dad in the picture. And she's able to do that because of the job she has working on those refineries. She can afford that. Taking away the refineries, doing the moratorium, that'll cause less jobs for the, everyone out there. And it's already a big thing for women in general to get nervous to be alone because the guys have to do the house stuff. And so that's the thing. And so all the women out there are going to have a harder time. And the women that are out there, they're successful having that job. That's like their home, that's their place, that's them saying, I can do it without them. And so that has a big part of it. I could go on at length regarding what has transpired over the year, but I think that the county executive's own words are much more fitting. As you're all no doubt aware, the county executive has sent in, sent in a letter sent to the council on January 23, 2019, and I quote, "The January 15, 2019 document, if adopted into law, would have a significant impact on operations of our existing industries at Cherry Point. In practice, this proposal, if lawful, which I would challenge, would deal what I would consider a knockout punch to future capital repair and maintenance projects at the refineries, notwithstanding any consideration of major renovation projects." If the council's goal as stated...
Thirty seconds, please.
...is concerned for public safety, how does this make the public safer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Miguel Perry. I'm a representative for the Pacific Northwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Our council covers six states, Washington, Oregon, Wyoming, Montana, Alaska, Idaho, and 25,000 members, hundreds of them working at their refinery. We have carpenters, we have scaffold rectors, we have mill rights working in the refineries. I want to get to the point, you look tired, I'm tired. We, the carpenters, oppose the sixth passage of the Cherry Point Fossil Fusil Fuel Moratorium. We also oppose the council's proposed changes to the comp plan and county code. The council proposed changes to the Waukam County Comprehensive Plan and Waukam Code are unnecessary because a proven regulatory framework is already in place. The recent comp plan changes written by Councilman Donovan, stamp dot earth and RE sources, makes their proposal for Cherry Point even more damaging. The council's proposed action in regards to Cherry Point will drive away businesses and cost jobs. Just want to say to you, you've heard a lot of things. I would say, don't give in to the Chicken Little syndrome. Chicken Little cry is the sky is falling. If you believe the sky is falling, these people are telling you, all these workers are doomed. Don't give in to fear. The way I see fear, to me, fear is faith running backwards, right? Faith makes you move forward. Fear holds you back. And it's all, it's everybody's responsibility. I just want to read something to you I find really interesting because none of us rode bicycles here. We all drove our cars, right? It says here that transportation, this transportation sector accounts to the largest, let me open, you know, my, to the largest share of US petroleum consumption. Transportation alone, 14.02 million barrels per day. That's 71% of us driving cars. We're all doing it, right? This phone is made out of fossil fuel, right? The plastics, this iPhone, right? The roads, asphalt made out of petroleum. And by the way, ladies, makeup wax made out of petroleum. It's part of our, we do that, you know? We're all responsible.
After these two gentlemen, they will open it up to anybody else who's not on the list. If you would like to speak after these gentlemen, please line up, start lining up behind them. Thank you. Sorry, Andrew.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Late night, huh? I really appreciate you guys, you work so hard, you give up a lot of your time. My name's Andrew Gamble. I'm a 15-year Waukam County resident and a graduate of BTC. Thank you. Been lucky enough to be employed for 13 years out at Cherry Point. And I'm also a Waukam County Business and Commerce Advisory Committee member. So thank you for your appointment to that. I appreciate that. I represent Petrogas. And normally I would have a written statement to read, but we didn't have time to put together anything because of the suddenness of some of the things that have been going on. We're opposed to the passage of this sixth Cherry Point Fossil Fuel Moratorium and these proposed changes to the comp plan, both the January 15, I think that was 2018015, and today's surprise resolution, although I know you put a lot of work into that. Petrogas has LPG operations out at Ferndale, the Ferndale Storage Terminal. That terminal's been there for a long time. It's a very safe operation, very special group of elite operators work out there at that terminal. This year, they've celebrated 18 years without an employee losing a day of work due to a workplace injury. 18 years, that's safe. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Bob Gay and I'm a business representative for the Electrical Workers Union, Local 191. We take in the nine northwestern counties with about 1,900 members. 350 of them live here in Waukam County. And probably half of those rely on steady employment at one of the Cherry Point Industries. Right now, we probably have 200 electricians out there at the BP and another 20 or so maybe at B-66. Anyway, I just want to join the rest of my union brothers and ask that you not pass the sixth moratorium. I'm, like I said, I'm fifth-generation Waukam County resident. I've been here my 60, almost one years. And I first stepped foot out there at the Arco Refinery, now currently BP. You and I was kind of a wide-eyed 19-year-old back in December of 1977. And, you know, that's the first of a lot of projects, probably almost 20 years directly at that refinery and then a little at what's now P-66. I think it was Mobil most of the time when I worked there, so it's been a while, a lot of owners. Anyway, we had some of our members here watching this, young members. One was a new journeyman, he just took his state test on Friday. And, you know, I'm just concerned that these moratoriums and now the new language is going to restrict their ability to work here locally. You know, they're going to be joining the crowd. I had to go to Seattle today for a meeting. And all I could think is why does anybody want to drive that? And it starts at exit, what is it, 206? And it's just a mess, so anyway. This whole process of trying to re-regulate the refinery, I mean, it seems a little dysfunctional. We've gone through a lot of hoops. You guys have spent a lot of time. We talk, everybody talks, we all say the same thing. And then all of a sudden, you throw the curve ball there, last meeting, and it's, now it's going on to the Planning Commission. I know there were changes tonight, I got a copy of it here. I know there were changes tonight, I got a copy of it here that I haven't quite digested, but I really, you know, it sounds like this language would require an environmental impact study for everything that they would do out there, parking lots, you know, minor renovations.
30 seconds, please.
And anyway, I just think you need to step back, like I said, not pass the moratorium, get everybody back to the table and start talking with the industry and see how this is really going to affect things because it's certainly going to affect our members if they won't, the companies won't spend their capital here. So, thank you.
Kathy Sable, District 3. I'm a member of the public who attends the Climate Impact Advisory Committee monthly meetings. The last one I went to was January 3rd, I believe, where they were looking at the draft ordinance language, I think, I'm not sure who was working with Todd Donovan on that language. But there was a lively discussion at that committee meeting, and I know their role is to advise the council on climate impact issues. They could not support the language in that ordinance as it occurred then. They tried to modify it, there are way too many questions. Even those people as experts could not support as the committee in their role advising council. I was not sure if you're aware of that, wanted to bring it up.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Yuri. I'm the Clean Energy Program Manager at Resources for Sustainable Communities in Bellingham. As you know, thousands of our supporters have encouraged this moratorium through emails, petitions, showing up here at these many hearings we've had. And we've got several more to go, so. And I just want to say, I feel compassion and sympathy for those here who are genuinely concerned about the future of our economy. I think it's a good thing that we're having this conversation and this public dialogue here. I just think we also need to get the facts straight. And let's be clear that under this moratorium, okay, many projects have been permitted and that the moratorium did not slow them down at all, okay? At the last moratorium extension hearing, the coker heater was being installed the same week, major construction project, okay? This month, a new replacement for the substation that powers the whole refinery was easily permitted for replacement, okay? So work is happening. This moratorium hasn't stopped that. If it stopped anything, it's the kind of projects that would not be job creators, that would not involve refining fuels, okay? So we all know that, we all recognize that. But these, the sort of, the fears that are coming out, they're the same kind of threats and fears that are said every time a regulation is imposed that restricts the option of a multinational corporation, okay? And every time that we propose and then pass a regulation that protects workers and communities and the environment, it's fought over, all these, you know, things, they make all these claims and then we pass it, they comply with it, it spurs them to invest more, it spurs them to hire more people to comply, they're better, we're all better for it, and then they come back here and they brag about it, okay? So we need to talk about what's being proposed as of January 15th, right? Which, in case anyone's confused, is not the resolution that was brought forward today that's on the back table. These are amendments that are a result, they're the answer to the request that was made in an April resolution asking staff to draft an ordinance implementing the recommendations that were presented here at council by Cascadey Law nearly a year ago. And that, or this, these draft amendments, recognizing they have months more process to go through, could be improved, they answer what was requested specifically in that resolution. So there's no surprises here, okay? But let's talk about what are the actual impacts of it, right? The intent of the policies and what it does is it ensures higher standards to protect the environment and the public safety and health by having impact studied and requiring conditions before we issue permits, okay? And I believe that industries can upgrade and expand while reducing their pollution and lessening the risks and harms to our community, not heightening them. They can meet that standard. And to think that they can't build anything without harming us, that's, I would challenge that. So, you know, some believe that the county government does not bear responsibility to protect us or our environment, or that, you know, that we should be exposed to unnecessary and unreasonable risks and harms. They say that, you know, we should let industries escape any process of accountability simply because they already exist. I would challenge that. I believe that clean air and clean water should be a right. As of now, pollution of our air and water is a permitted use that is allowed by governments, okay? They don't have the right to pollute, we allow them to. And putting conditions on future projects that would increase pollution, that's a reasonable thing for government to do, okay? To know the impacts, you have to study them. That's what an environmental impact statement does. It puts it on the table so that decision-makers can see what's being proposed, what alternatives exist, what mitigations exist, and make a responsible decision, okay? Requiring an EIS does not stop projects from happening unless their impacts are so adverse and unmitigable and unreasonable that the county is compelled to reject permits by way of the code that authorizes them to do so. So I encourage you to pass this moratorium. I encourage you to move forward with planning commission review of the January 15 amendments. And thank you again for your time. We'll be back at the upcoming hearings we have on this topic. So thank you for your service.
Hello, council. Welcome, Councilmember Frazee. Thank you for visiting our council last week, and I want to invite all council members to visit us. My name is John Muchler and I am the mayor of Ferndale. And since Lyndon Mayor Courtheis is not here tonight, I want to remind everyone that Ferndale is currently on track to becoming the second-largest city in Wachem County. He's in Spain, by the way. I mention our growing population because Ferndale is one of the few places remaining where you can get a good, quality job working with your hands, your heart, and your head. A job that provides for a family, a job that can buy a house, a job that gives you the financial stability that is so fleeting these days. These jobs are in Ferndale with our manufacturers, our contractors, our small businesses, and yes, our refineries. What you're doing here today is tying our hands. I appreciate your motives, but not your methods. This is the wrong tool to accomplish your goals. You want to address climate change? Fine, I get it. But I, but don't hogtie our industries to do it. We also want them, the industries, to evolve and improve, but like all industries must, like all industries must. But you can't change it with a moratorium hanging over their heads. It's punishing and it's strangling. This is the wrong move and you will wreck very real impacts on my community. This is in fact a misuse of the moratorium process, which is meant to be temporary. Six extensions, that isn't anything to be proud of. That is an absence of leadership. You are bringing uncertainty and exasperation to some of the finest employers, employees, and some of the finest people in our county. This threatens investment in Wachem County. It restricts much-needed updates to the refineries and it hurts working families in my growing city. So please, find another way to accomplish sound environmental policy because this is the wrong path. And thank you for your time.
Councilmembers, my name is Rhea Bordian. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm not here only as a BP employee, but I'm here as a tax-paying resident who has made Bellingham home for 30 years. As a steward of this planet, I'm pleased to be part of a generation that is working toward a greener future. I'm also grateful to be employed by a company who is committed to playing a key role in advancing low-carbon future through developing new technologies, reducing emissions, through improving its processes and products, and working with partners to achieve cleaner energy that significantly lowers the carbon footprint for everyone. BP is also committed to working with Governor Inslee and the legislature on fair and comprehensive carbon pricing legislation. Have any of you taken the time to learn what your local refineries are doing to produce carbon-neutral products and lower emissions? Do you have any idea the capital investments these businesses have made to develop and execute the projects which are aligned with the very goals that you say you are trying to achieve? Biofuel is one example of how BP is reducing up to 60% of greenhouse gas emissions. They are also investing in carbon-free chemical technology that uses 30% less energy to remove CO2 with a significant net reduction in CO2 emissions each year. There are many other examples, but my point is that I don't see this council educating themselves on how its local businesses are participating in the effort of reducing emissions. Also, by this council pitting its citizens against one another, you lose the opportunity to help bridge the indifference through education and collaboration and working toward advancing the energy transition as one team. I wonder, has this council thought about the ripple effects of not having companies like BP, Phillips 66, Elkoa here? It's great to have goals toward creating a healthy environment for the next generation, but do you honestly think driving industry out is actually going to achieve this? Not only will you create an exodus of citizens who will need to move from this beautiful area to find jobs and support themselves, you will impact small businesses, retail shops, nonprofits. Where is the respect for all the county's residents? This county has insisted on finding methods to create unnecessary hurdles for these industries to operate instead of working with them, to develop a better working relationship toward the goal of improving emissions and reducing the carbon footprint. All the things you and these special interest groups say you want to achieve are already a priority for the oil industries.
30 seconds, please.
They have designated divisions invested to the advancement of low-carbon through research, testing, and product development. We are lucky to have BP, Phillips 66, and Elkoa and other contract companies that have invested in this community, providing good jobs for its citizens. My peers and I commit each day to the values of BP, respect, one team, courage, excellence, and safety. It would be a refreshing change if this council adopted these values also. I am not in favor of this council extending the moratorium. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Capson and I live at 1015 Harrison Avenue in Blaine, Washington. I thank you very much for your service. This is a very difficult issue. Being up in Blaine, we have a little bit of a different perspective, and that involves the Canadian government. On May 29th, 2018, the Canadian federal government made a shocking announcement of its intent to acquire the Trans Mountain Pipeline from Kinder Morgan for $45 billion. The Canadian economy is heavily reliant on revenue from Alberta Tar oil sands. Since the proposed Keystone XL Pipeline expansion project, which runs from Alberta to refineries in Illinois and Texas and is owned by TransCanada Corporation, is not a current option, there are only two choices to get the Alberta Tar sands oil to market. First, to complete the pipeline expansion through Burnaby, B.C., and ship the oil between the environmentally sensitive Canadian Gulf Islands and San Juan Islands in the Salish Sea down through the state of Wanda Fuqua. Or two, to send the oil to the U.S. through the Pacific Northwest using the Puget Sound portion of the Trans Mountain Pipeline, which starts in Sumas. If it is not politically possible to ship Alberta's Tar sands oil from Burnaby, B.C., Sumas becomes the preferred route. B.C. oil would then travel to Cherry Point in Ferndale. Currently, 30% of the crude oil coming into Washington comes from the Puget Sound section of the Trans Mountain Pipeline. The heavy oil from
30 seconds, please.
is environmentally very detrimental. So the bottom line is to fully support this moratorium. The bottom line of the moratorium is to prohibit additional new fossil fuel refineries in Cherry Point beyond the existing British Petroleum, Phillips 66, and Petrogas facilities. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Hannah Murphy. I'm 19 years old.
Close to the microphone, please.
I'm Hannah Murphy, I'm 19 years old, and I oppose this, this thing. I, one thing I want to point out is, I don't know why we're listening to environmentalists simply because they have made multiple predictions over the last almost 50 years that have been proven totally false. One was in 1970, Dr. George Wald predicted that civilization would end within 15 to 30 years. Obviously, that has not happened. In 1970, another environmentalist also predicted that we'd be wearing gas masks in 10 years. That obviously hasn't happened either. So I, as a voter, I want to know why we are giving consideration to a group of people whose models have not predicted accurately what's going to happen in the future. You can't predict, all these people here who keep saying, you know, we're, by 12 years, we're going to be doomed. Why are we listening to that? People have been saying that the end of time is coming for a very long time. People in the medieval ages were saying, you know, we're going to be doomed in a few months if you don't repent, or whatever. I don't know why we're listening to these people now when they have multiple times made these predictions and nothing has happened. In fact, the opposite has happened. They said we would have dirtier air. We have cleaner air and water now than we have ever had in the past. Now, I wasn't planning to speak today, but I just want you to know that young voters in this county, not all of them support your environmentalist ideas. So, thank you.
And just as a reminder, if you wish to speak, please line up behind these three people. Ms. Brannie.
Good evening, council. Lynn Murphy with Puget Sound Energy. Just as a reminder, we have six-generation projects here in the county. That includes a battery project in Glacier, a hydro project in east part of the county, and then our four natural gas facilities. So we generate quite a bit of power for our 90,000 customers just here in Wachem County. We have over 1 million electric customers across our service territory. As a state-regulated utility, we are required by law to provide reliable and safe electric service to those 90,000 Wachem County customers. We ask that the county council take additional time to carefully consider the language proposed in the January 15 amendments and the stated goals in your resolution that you introduced today at the community at the whole meeting. We also ask that you ensure that the county's actions do not partially or potentially place regulatory constraint and prevent PSE from serving our customers or performing our duties as I stated are required by state law. We trust that additional work will be done with industry leaders. That includes myself and everybody else that has spoken here tonight against the moratorium, including planning commissioners and the county's planning and development services to ensure a balanced outcome. We would love to have you out at our facilities, learn more about what we do, the impacts that these amendments could potentially have on our 90,000 electric customers that we serve. Thank you.
I'm new to this community. I have recently become a Western student. I am here to speak on behalf of the moratorium on the basis of the Native American tribes. Now, I've, I've heard both ends of the extreme tonight. If you don't do this, then climate change is going to doom us. If you do pass this, then all the jobs are going to go away. But in between that all, I heard a plea for all voices to be heard. And one voice that I did not hear tonight was that of the Native American tribes who got their treaty prescribed rights to their waters by not having the negative effects from the BP, from the coal terminal. And I am very proud of this, of this community for getting that terminal to not go in, but my fear is that without this moratorium, that corporate power is eventually going to outstrip public power without legislative oversight. So I would like the council to consider all sides, climate change and Native American trading rights and the health of both of the economy and the people. Because I know that this, the passage of this moratorium from the first will be just the first step, that it will be refined into something that works for both sides. But first, we need to put, set down the first milestone, and that is tonight. So I heard a lot of sides. So, I heard a lot of sides tonight, but in truth, there can be no sides with something like the environment like we all share, so let's strike that balance. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you just please state your name for the record?
It's Jacob Peterson.
Okay, thank you. And again, anybody who wants us to speak, if I don't have anybody else lining up, these will be the two last speakers for the evening.
Good evening, Council. My name is Derek Drake, 53, North Point Drive, Southern Valley. I've lived here in Bellingham, where I've been able to raise my triplet daughters, who now are starting their own families. I am that guy who's going to start the legacy for my son-in-laws to work in our trade, okay? What you're doing here with this moratorium, I am totally against. I am a plumber. I am a pipe fitter. I have plumbed many of buildings in this town. I voted for some of you guys, and I still can't believe that I did. Honestly. You laugh, you're smiling, you think it's funny. It's not funny. It's not. It's not a joke, okay? It's pretty upsetting that you guys are making a decision, all these men and women out here, and denying them before you can talk about it. Look, I'm going to make it short, okay? I'm totally opposed. Please reconsider, okay? Look it over. Do it right. Why are you still smiling? It's not funny.
Oh, I agree.
He smiles a lot.
Enjoying your testimony. Thank you.
And again, if there's nobody else, it'll be these with the last two speakers.
My name is Miguel Edmondson. M.I.G.U.E.L. Edmondson. E.D.M.O.N.D. S.O.N. I live in Bellingham, zip code 98226, and I'm with the Labor's International Union of North America, local 292 out of Everett. I just really want you guys to understand the jobs aspect of it. There's a lot of people here that think that it's only going to affect... No. That are saying that there's still going to be jobs at Cherry Point, there are still going to be people running that refinery. That's not the jobs we're talking about. We're not talking about steel tenders. We're talking about contractors that are going in, contractors that are doing the work, contractors that are... The vendors, the guys making all the supplies, making everything inside and outside those gates. That's a little part of it. Then we're talking about the people that live in Waukam County, the people that work, I don't know, dentists, doctors, public works, all over the county. I mean, the money comes from the Cherry Point industrial area, and it comes into our economy. You look at, like Pierce County and Thurston County, you know, they get a lot of that money from Joint Base Lewis McCord down there, and you get King County and the suburbs outside of King County, and that's all, a lot of it with the tech boom, like Amazon and Microsoft. I'm not saying they all are in the military, or they're all working for Amazon. Those jobs create more jobs in the community, from what some people would perceive as a small, little job, all the way to a big job, like a doctor or a lawyer. It's all affected by that outside money. And if you, you know, you put this moratorium in again, again, we're going to be forced to work outside our county, and we're going to get tired of driving back to Waukam County when there's no hope in sight that we're going to have jobs in the refineries up here while we're working down there at March Point, down there in Anacortes. And/or we have to go down to Snohomish County and work on the sound transit down there. We're going to end up moving down there. We're going to get tired of the drive. We're going to be outside of this county before the results that you guys think is going to happen. We're not going to be here to see it. There's going to be a lot of people not here to see it, because they won't have moved away to where the work is. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I need people to line up if you're going to speak.
Hi, my name is Natalie Chavez. I live in Bellingham. I am grateful to be here tonight. I cannot imagine not being here this final public hearing to extend this moratorium. I have attended the majority of past public hearings, and it has been exhausting. I can only imagine how it has been for all of you, the whole process, including all of the emails, voicemails, phone calls, et cetera, that you have received. I am grateful that we have had such intelligent and educated Waukam County council members throughout this process, like Carl Wymer, Satball Sudu, Todd Donovan, and Red Brown. We are very fortunate. Not all regions in the United States have such evolved and progressive county councils. Thank you for continuing to protect our community from the risks of fossil fuel infrastructure. Thank you for caring about protective land use, for holding industries to higher safety and pollution standards, for caring about the Lemmy Tribe and treaty rights, for caring about environmental impacts for fossil fuel projects, for caring about the Orca's, for caring about us, our health, our children, and our grandchildren. Thank you for protecting us, even though there are some of us who don't fully comprehend what it is that you are doing and why you are doing it. To me, you are like having a Waukam County life insurance policy, and having life insurance is important. Although not all of us may have individual life insurance, I am grateful that we have a collective life insurance in this region, one which has the best interests of our community in mind, in spite of ongoing judgments and criticism. There are some of us here who don't care about ocean acidification, climate change, the Orca's, public health, or the environment. To those people, I quote this that Todd Donovan wrote on January 16th, quote, "In July 2013, a crude oil train exploded in Quebec. In a town the size of Blaine, killing 47 people, the town center was destroyed, and toxins from the fires left it uninhabitable. The train was carrying the same product that our refineries are moving through Bellingham and Ferndale. The damage from these events is irreversible." Later, Todd Donovan writes, quote, "It expects that local fossil fuel facilities are insured to cover the costs of catastrophic, worst-case scenario disasters like the event in Quebec," end quote. Now, really, who wouldn't want this? This is about protecting us, our families, our community. Again, thank you for forging on, taking your time in this thoughtful process. To me, six extensions reflects thoroughness, thoughtfulness, and competency. I support Donovan's amendments and the resolution proposed by Brown, Donovan, and Sudu. I support the extension of this moratorium."
Thirty seconds, please.
"And it is my hope that you all vote yes to extend it. Thank you."
Okay. And our last speaker?
My name is Joseph Cancelosi. I live in Ferndale, Washington, with my wife and three kids. I didn't want to come up here today because I'm scared to death to talk in public, so bear with me. Just last night, I voted yes to approve a school bond for Ferndale, Washington. This would be increasing my taxes. I want to be able to confidently afford a new school. From the school that they're in right now, the rat-infested, leaky-roofed school, I want to be able to provide my children, my oldest is 12, my middle daughter, she's nine, and my son is seven years old, that will all have a chance to go to a new school. I want to be able to afford that. I want to be able to go to a job, knowing that I can go and work towards a better future, work towards building jobs, building capital projects out of these refineries that help us move into the future with cleaner, more efficient projects. What I'm currently working on is one of the biggest in the world that BP is doing right now. In Ferndale, Washington, that money, all the people putting, that job's putting to work right now, is going to the tax base of this county. And I feel like if we continue this moratorium stuff, continue this garbage, it's damaging to this county, damaging to these families that are trying to survive. I am not anti-environment. I like to go to the beach and have a clean beach to go walk on with my kids, too. But I feel like it's important to not... I haven't had a chance to read the January 15th amendment, or whatever you want to call it, but I feel like a lot of people are scared, and I'm getting scared hearing some of these people talk. So, thank you for your time, and I am a proud citizen of Waukam County.
Okay.
Carol Perry, Waukam County. Emergency. Councilman Buchanan. I remember the first time you read the emergency moratorium. I think the executive was in Canada, so you had to do it a different way. Maybe I don't remember right. But we keep saying, "Emergency." A moratorium should be something that you don't do very often. It's an emergency. And I love the testimony of this young woman, because I know how she feels. I had little kids in the 80s, and what was the book? I can't remember the title, but it was, "Because of overpopulation, we were all going to die." And I had a couple... I had one baby at that time. But I thought, "Oh, my goodness! We're going to all die because of overpopulation." And that's happened over and over and over. Emergency? And I'm pretty sure I know how you're going to vote tonight, because I've been here every time. I was here when Mr. Donovan, at the end of two years of comp plan, and we were all done, and then these amendments got thrown in. And I was there when Carl Wymer said, "We want to hear from the industry. We want a dialogue. We want you to come in." That was four or five years ago. I am so glad that these people came tonight, because I've been here when things were kind of programmed. And I'm so proud of these men who work and are taking leadership, because Max and I sit here a lot of times, and the people don't know what goes on. They don't, they can't enter in. So, I'll just end this way. "As a man sews, so shall he also reap." Search your own hearts about your vote. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll close the open public session. And we've had the hearing. So, do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
You do.
Move to approve a second?
Second.
That's moved by Mr. Donovan, second by Mrs. Sudu. Any discussion? Mrs. Brenner.
Boy, I'm sure thinking about things different than when we started all this tonight. I got to keep this short. I was one of the hippies in the 60s who didn't want, you know, no one thought I'd live to be 30, and I shouldn't have kids because it's the end of the world. I feel really sad for people who still feel that way, because it's a horrible feeling. I was miserable, and I stayed pretty miserable, except, you know, when I did stuff I shouldn't do. But I stayed pretty miserable. And then I became a mom, and I can't tell anybody else what changed them, but there was a switch I didn't even know I had. And I thought, "Well, you know, is it the end of the world? What's the end of the world? Maybe what I should do is behave like I can help the environment myself, not by coming to meetings and, you know, saying stuff, but by living." I live lightly on the earth. I mean, I've always done it. And we're foresters, too, my husband and me. And the fellow who said that thing about the fires, they were caused, you know, the government fires, which were some of the major ones, were caused by the undergrowth that wasn't kept clean. Now, they're rethinking what they're doing. There's all kinds of stuff. I believe the climate's been changing forever, and it's going to always change. I do believe that what's most important to me is that everybody does their own part on walking lighter on the earth. And I drive a car, and I wouldn't give that car up for anything, because it gets me where I need to go. I get the most energy-efficient one I can. But there's so many things I want to say, because I feel like there's more sadness in what's taken place here than there is the hostility of a few that tried to put, you know, certain people down. But most people are scared on both sides of this issue. I feel extremely fortunate to live here. I've moved all over the world. I feel so fortunate to live here in Waukam County, and I have so... Not only did I before this, but I have so much respect for our refineries here. They are the cleanest in the world. I mean, I've read all kinds of stuff. Terry's here, who's a fisher. He gave me this book, King of Fish. How many of you guys, I've told you about it over and over, how many have read it? Well, I've read it three times now, and it's about the stuff that's killing the salmon and doing the most damage is the acidic rain and the acidic currents coming from Asia. Well, guess what's happening in Asia? They're doing all this stuff there without the regulations that we have here. I think we are very lucky to be here. I think Waukam County is an amazing place, and I think part of the amazement is with the industries and everybody. We all live here, and everybody wants it to be the best. So, this attitude of anybody that... It made me really sad to see how much defensiveness was on the part of the workers. I don't think you guys should be defensive at all, but I was real impressed with your comments. The people who were scared and, you know, really terrified of what's happening, I've been there. I know what that feels like. It's horrible. But I really think if we don't do the best here, that is what will happen. Somebody disagreed with me on a comment earlier, and whoever that 19-year-old was who, "Whew, you got it quicker than me." Yeah, you. I mean, it took me a lot longer to figure out that all I can do is the best I can do personally, planting trees, taking out lawn, doing all this stuff. I've worked with Nook Sack Salmon Enhancement. They told me how to do something. They said it'll take me three or four months, or maybe a summer. I did it in like two weeks, because I'm obsessive. I'm just saying, we all have our gifts, and nobody's gifts are more important than other people's gifts. We all do stuff to make things better, and this, it should have never gotten to this point, and it makes me very sad that it has. I'm certainly not going to support the moratorium. I did support it the first few times, but then, as it started changing and the rhetoric was getting so scared, and some of it so nasty, I just, I don't feel it's a good way that we're telling people, "We all have our gifts in how to make the planet a better place." And I am way more terrified of stuff outside of here that could come our way if we don't change the opinions and the attitudes and the way that people other places live. I think we're doing a darn good job here. So, there you have it.
Other comments? Other discussion? Mr. Bird?
Question on procedure. When are we going to be voting, or when's the resolution coming?
It's coming after this.
So, we'll vote on this directly after, prior to open session?
I was going to suggest that we might want to take a break before... That'll be up to the council to decide. We've been at this now for 10 hours, three hours, so...
Okay. I'll save my comments for that.
All right. Further discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazi?
Yes.
Satball Sudu?
Yes.
That passes five to two, with Brenner and Bird opposed. Now, what's the wishes of the council? Do you want to go on to the resolution, or you want to take a break?
Break.
Break? Okay. Looks like the break is on order. We will be back in 10 minutes. Thank you.
Terry, you are so funny.
Terry, you are so funny.
I'd like to reconvene the Watcom County Council meeting for January 29, 2019. And the next item up is, we were going to discuss, uh, where is the version?
Okay. Oh. Oh, no, open session.
We didn't have a cover sheet for it, did we? No, okay. So, and do I need to read the whole thing in the record or not, or just the title? Okay. So, it's a resolution requesting the county executive provide staff resources and funding to allow Cascadia Law Group to complete the contract number 20, well, 2017-08008. Related to legal ways the county may choose to limit the negative impacts on public safety, transportation, the economy, and environment from crude oil, coal, liquefied petroleum gases, and natural gas, transshipments from the Cherry Point UGA. This version of this document will be available online if it's not already. And do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Donovan, move to approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Soodoo seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Right. Um, I will give you one little compliment. I think it's, it is better, no offense, Todd, but it's better than the, the previous one. But, um, what really scares me about it is we're counting on the Cascadia Law Firm, and the guy who came and spoke to us from Cascadia Law Firm was so nice, but they do have, they're not a, they're not an objective law firm. They are specifically weighted on one side, and I don't think that's the way to get the most objective information or, um, legal advice. So, I'm not going to support it, but, and why I liked it better was it was much more vague than, than Councilmember Donovan's was, which made it less, didn't jump right out at you, but still, I don't, I don't think it's the right thing to do, and I really, more than that, don't think it was the right way to do it.
Further discussion? Ms. Frezey.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I like that you put in what I was worried about, you know, office buildings and things like that being restricted. And in here, you know, from 19 to 27, lines 19 to 27, um, says, "The county council also recognizes the final language should without delay allow minor projects associated with fossil fuel facilities, such as office expansion, parking lots, regular maintenance." And so, they did put that in, which I was happy about.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, I was going to say, following up on that, there, there was frequent mention of the county executives, I'll just call it his email. Um, so this is taking both from his concerns that we would not be able to permit accessory buildings, parking lots, and Mr. Personius's response also about similar related facilities, that that was not the intent and is not the intent to make those things difficult to permit. I don't know if we've explained this much, it's also to try to give some sideboards to Planning Development Services to work with the documents that we've produced so far and see what can be translated into code. The timeline on this, we haven't really discussed, but in terms of why I think there's some urgency to do this is, it's going to take a couple of weeks before we can get, if we can get this contract approved, that means that's a couple more weeks before we can get legal review started, which means it's a couple more weeks before we can get it to the Planning Commission, and if we want to not have another moratorium, this might be the fastest route to do that, so.
Uh, if I may, just before you do that, I was just reminded that earlier this afternoon, we, Mr. Donovan made an amendment which was seconded, but we didn't actually do the vote. So, uh, that's on page two, and it's the first, uh, the, it's where it says, line 39 and 40, you'll see there's some, two changes there, so, uh, I want to repeat, so that was your motion, that we, that we incorporate those changes?
Yeah, we did vote on that.
No, we didn't actually take the vote.
I wasn't sure.
I was, I was appropriately chastised afterwards, uh, for not doing that. Um, so that's your motion?
Yeah, that's my motion.
And I think I seconded it. Any discussion on the motion to amend?
Oh, I'll second that.
All right. Mr. Soodoo seconds that. Any motion on the, discussion on the motion, and then seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Was that, were you yes for?
Yes.
To amend it?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm yes to amend that.
So, that, that passes five.
To amend what?
Just, just the link, just?
Yes, this.
Oh, the, the thing about, we can't force them to do that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I brought that up earlier. I thought you meant this other.
So, is that a vote for yes for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you got it in two places, by the way. It's not just in that one place. There's another place where you say the same thing. I'll find it. It's right here somewhere. Um, just a second. No, I mean, it's absolutely making it sound like we are instructing, um...
It's page four, line 35.
Page four, but it was in two places. It's on page four, line, um...
35.
35 and 36, but it was also in the beginning.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay. So, the intention is for that to be repeated there too, Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, so, Ms. Brenner, then, I would propose amending page four, line 35, in a similar way, so I would say, be it further resolved that council requests, and then the sentence continuing on and deleting be instructed, so that the council requests that planning development, uh, ensure, deleting be instructed to.
Right. So, that's a second amendment? Is that your motion?
That was my motion.
Mr. Soodoo, did you second that, too?
I second that, yeah.
Okay, so, we'll now vote on the motion to, I guess it's just easier for you to vote on both amendments at the same time?
Yeah.
All in favor?
We did the ones, so just do the second.
Okay. All right, so voting on the second amendment, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero.
Reminds me, yes, I'm doing first and two, but I have one more.
Just, just a second. So, the first vote was six to zero with Mr. Buchanan excused, the second vote was six to zero with Mr. Buchanan excused. Ms. Brenner.
On, uh, page one, line 25, um, the sentence ends, it talks about, "The council recognizes blah, 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 made recent investments in facilities as renewable fuel production and blending, which it hopes will continue." I think it should say, "which it believes will continue." I think the industries, I take them at their word anyway, but this hopes thing, it just rubbed me the wrong way. It's kind of like, well, we're hopeful, but we don't, you know, I think we should be supportive by saying believe.
Ms., oh, Ms. Brenner, you're being asked to use the microphone. People can't hear you.
Okay, okay?
Yeah, well, your fan club couldn't hear you, so.
Oh, I could, they could hear me without a microphone, believe me. Um, okay, so, humor me, I'm not going to vote for the thing, but I think saying believes instead of hopes, hopes just...
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion to change line 25, the word hopes to believe.
Yeah, I'll read the whole thing. It says, "Whereas the council recognizes that existing refineries have made recent investments in facilities such as renewable fuel production and blending," and then that dash, and it said, "which it hopes will continue." I think it should say, "which it believes will continue."
Further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero. Any further discussion?
Well, wait a second. Um, I think, okay, number nine, okay, page three, uh, G, which starts on line 28 and goes to 38, um, I think that there's a problem here at, with this, what, claiming what climate changes are doing, and this reduced rainfall and snowpack. Well, I have a friend who, who does the snowpack and the rainfall up in Glacier, and this has been one of the, this and the last couple of years have been, like, having the, some of the highest many inches that they've ever had, and rainfall too. So, this whole thing, it sounds scary, but we don't know, it's, it goes up and it goes down, and I don't believe we've got reduced rainfall. There's times of the year when it doesn't rain, but the reduced rainfall per year, I don't believe has gone down, especially in the last few years, and definitely not the snowpack either. So, I don't think those are correct, put in there.
So, I need a motion if you wish to change something?
Take them out.
I have a motion, you, you made a motion to take them out, is there a second for that? Mr. Bird, second this discussion. Seeing none, all, Mr. Soodoo?
Yeah, I was going to say that, uh, I was going to say that at, at a minimum requires local mitigation, such as carbon offset programs, and facility emission, then stop there and then take the rest of it out. You know, if you go to line 28 and 29...
That's not what I'm doing at the moment. I mean, you could bring that up if you want.
Okay, may I request?
Say that again, I can.
Yeah, may I request a friendly amendment, Ms. Brenner? Okay, my, uh, request is that line 28, G, uh, the first line, add a minimum, require local mitigation of, such as carbon offset programs that are deployed within Watcom County's borders, s- facility emissions above the baseline to compensate for increased emissions, for additional emissions, and take the climate?
Change part out.
Change part out.
Oh, I take that as a very friendly amendment.
Then, take rest of all the lines out. They are just descriptive, but the...
So, would end it compensate?
Baseline to compensate, okay, let me read it again. Add a minimum require, uh, local mitigation of such, uh, such as carbon offset programs that are deployed within Watcom County's borders, facility emissions above the baseline, uh, period.
Period.
Um, I'm sorry, I've lost you, so, would you read, would you read again exactly what you're proposing?
Want me to read it again?
Maybe three lines instead of 10.
I think after the line 30, baseline, word baseline?
Mm-hmm.
Period.
Period. And take the whole rest of that out, the whole rest of the paragraph.
That's, so that's your motion? Okay.
That's the amendment I requested to Ms. Brenner, and she accepts that, right?
Okay, and does the seconders accept the amendment? Okay, so that's...
I already took it as a friendly amendment.
No, but the seconder has to accept it too, and the seconder has accepted it, so that's now valid.
Well, they either then would, he, he said it, so you second it, right?
He seconded it.
Okay.
I asked for a friendly amendment, and she agreed with that.
We have a valid motion on the floor now, so any further discussion on Mr. Soodoo's and Ms. Brenner's, um, motion to amend? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Um, that passes, was it aye down here? That passes six to zero, okay. Um, is there any intent to put, is it, was the intent just to strike out all that language or move it somewhere else?
Nope. Strike it, that was my intent.
Okay, was that your intent too, Mr. Soodoo? Was your intent to move that language elsewhere or just strike it out?
Strike it out.
Okay, fine, all right, good. Any further discussion on the main motion now to approve? Mr. Soodoo?
Yeah, I, like, when we talked on January 15, I think my major concern is the timeline, not timeline for this resolution or short term, but many people have said today, uh, I believe on purpose or intend, intentionally, that the last extension, to me, the last extension, which we did in, uh, August or something, to me, that was the last extension of this, uh, moratorium, because, actually, I challenge the whole council that, let this be the last one, and we should do whatever we need to do, so that, end of this, and we counted our time, January, February, and all this, and we had, uh, Cascadia Law came and gave us quite clear guidelines, what we can and what we cannot do, and that is my concern, and I would like to engage the other council members into this thing, that let's discuss that timeline, because I think we need to, to bring this to conclusion as soon as possible.
Further discussion? Ms. Brenner.
I have another amendment. On the last page, page six, exhibit A, line eight, um...
Uh, we can't change this, because this is actually a repeat of what, this is an exhibit of a previous document.
Well, this is a new document.
No, no, but it's referring to a previous contract, so it's a, it's a, it's a fact, we can't change the fact.
We can change, we can change stuff, it, it doesn't have to be the same, and I brought it up before on the other stuff, liquefied petroleum gas and natural gas are not unrefined fossil fuels. I mean, yet, they're, they're refined, and I don't know if she mentioned it, I was trying to listen, everybody, but, uh, P S, yeah, P S E talked about, they're, they're switching from coal to much cleaner sources for, for gas, so, um, or was it, I can't remember, she, I was right, okay. Yeah, and, and she brought that up several times in front of us in the past, so I just don't like putting liquefied petroleum gas and natural gas in with crude oil and coal. I don't feel like they're the same at all, and so I'd like to take out liquefied petroleum gas and natural gas, and it would say, from crude oil and coal.
So, do I have a second for that motion?
Oh, I will second it, so we can discuss this.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Soodoo, do you wish to discuss?
Mr. Donovan.
I don't think we can do this, this is an exhibit which is the scope of work from a contract that's already been, oh, sorry, sorry about, I don't think we can do this, this is not part of the resolution, this is an exhibit that is drawing from a scope of work from a contract that already exists, we can't rewrite that contract, and maybe we can, not in the resolution.
Mr. Soodoo?
Yeah, that was my point too, because this is, this is just like seeking advice. It, we, we not saying that they're included, that's something is our prerogative, that we want to include that in the main, uh, our motion or our ordinance or not. This exhibit A is scope of work for, if we get to hire the Cascadia Law, we need to know as much information from them, that's what it is all about. It has nothing to, it does not have bearings on the actual resolution. So, we are seeking advice, and we should seek advice on more, and whatever we want to use, we can use out of that. So, and a contract has been signed and given, and we're just looking for an extension of that. So, I would say, we can keep it the same and just get what they want to say, and then use the advice, what part we want to use.
So, I just want to make sure everybody's clear, th- this is not, Exhibit A is not what we are, is not what we are instructing or hope that Cascadia Law does in its entirety, it's, it, it's referred to in two ways. The first one is, what did we tell them to do last time? And we can't change that, because that's what we gave them. You know, it's just a, it's just a historical fact, this is what we gave you last time. Where it does, does go on and says, is that, that item number three, which was based on the above study, developing proposed comprehensive plan amendments and associated code and rule amendments for the council consideration as soon as possible. So, that is, that item three is both an historical reference, and you could say future instructions, but items one and two are just historical. Does that make sense? So, Ms. Brenner.
Well, the contract amount thing has run out, we're still, we're going to have to create a new contract anyway, or supplemental, or whatever you want to call it, so, yeah, all things are open, and we, we could change the wording on the resolution to say, "Requesting a county executive provide staff resources and funding to allow Cascadia Law Group to make some changes and some completions to contract, blah, blah, blah." That would cover it.
I, I was going to say, if we, if we read the line 42, page one?
Page 42?
Page, line 42.
Yeah.
It, it just says, "In 2017 budget, the county allocated $150,000 for legal assistance and contracted to spend $75,000 with Cascadia Law Group to undertake item one and two in the scope of work in exhibit A." That is the only reference to exhibit A. So, to me, it's clear that we can just leave it the way it is and just get the advice, and then we use what we need to use.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, we're going to make changes anyway, because that money is no longer available, we have to reauthorize it. It's not there.
Well, Ma- Ms. Frey is going to tell us something.
I understand it, the reference to exhibit A is just telling us what the contract scope of work was in the past.
Yeah.
When we do a new contract, we can do a different scope of work, but we can't change this, because it's just what existed.
Yeah.
But the money doesn't exist anymore, so we would have to redo that anyway, so we most certainly can make changes.
Yeah.
May I?
I, okay.
Mr. Bird?
Uh, I, I think the problem would be that it would almost essentially be falsifying records, because we're referencing a past contract, and to change the terms of that contract and reference it in a changed manner could be perceived to the public as us trying to say that contract was something that it wasn't.
Yeah.
And so, we could write that into a future contract, which we would have to do, as you've said, but we couldn't change what was said in the old contract, because it's, it's historical record.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, you could, if you quoted and then did that dot, dot, dot thing, and, you know, so that it shows that you're taking something out, and you've already, if you make the, the thing that says changes and complete, wouldn't just be about complete?
So, Ms. Brenner, if, um, for example, if I said, as exhibit A, here was the sign-in sheet for tonight, if I said, if I wrote a document and said, "We had a sign-in sheet on this meeting, and here, here is a copy of exhibit A," I cannot modify that sign-in sheet, because that would be falsifying the record. And all we are doing here is saying that when we issued a contract back in 2017, this was the scope of work on that contract in 2017. It's not saying it has to be the scope of work going forward, that could be something different. It's simply saying, this is what we did in 2017. Ms. Brenner.
Except that we take stuff out of context all the time, we can change the wording that does, it would say, make changes, um, to the contract. That's all you got to do, is ma- you're making the changes, you quote the parts that are the same, you put the dot, dot, dot in the part that isn't, that has been changed, and you go from there. People do it all the time in, in legal documents.
And I would invite you to consider doing that when we come to a new contract.
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
I, I mean, I could suggest that we just end that line at, with the Cascadia Law Group and get rid of, the reference to exhibit A and exhibit A. We could get rid of exhibit A from the document, it's not necessary.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Well, further discussion on, well, it's now been amended to take out exhibit A. Further discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No?
Uh, I didn't even understand, what, what, what are we voting for? I just want to know.
My amendment was to just take out that...
The amended, okay, so the amended motion was to, um, where did you say you wanted to put the, the full stop?
Put, put the full stop after Cascadia Law Group.
Okay, so the motion was to put the full stop after Cascadia Law Group, and then to remove the language, to undertake, this is on line 43 on page one.
Um, yeah, the second and last paragraph.
The, the purpose is to delete any reference to previous work done by reference to the exhibit?
Yeah, that'll work.
Which I think is, takes, is less informative to the public than...
I, I would say, it, it is unharming, it does not affect anything, you know, why we are changing it, because when we get the appropriation, we, we have to make a request to the co- executive to appropriate $40,000 or what, $75,000 or whatever $40,000 we ask for. When we do that, we will write a new contract, and you will have the opportunity at that time, define... at that time, define why we are spending that $40,000 for, this is what we did, I don't know why we want to change what we did already.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I want to change it because I didn't like what we did in the first place of trying to make it look like certain things are unrefined when they're not, and that's what the first thing did, it categorized certain products as unrefined, which they're not, that's what I'm.
So, let's see if we can move past this amendment, so is everybody clear on what the motion is?
No.
I rely, I rely on you to read our minds.
I'll just read it, I'll read it, let's see, I, why don't we just take out lines forty-two through forty-four? What?
Well, no, Ms. Brenner has now changed her motion completely. We are on page one.
Page, well, it's got to come out in several places, page one, and at the top of the title, and in the last, and the scope of work thing, well, we could do them all as separate motions.
Yeah, okay, so for, for the sake of process, let's deal with these one at a time, the original motion on the floor was on line forty-three, page one, at the end of the word group, there was going to be a full stop, and then everything remaining on forty-four and, sorry, forty-three and forty-four was going to be deleted, except for the, the semicolon in the end, right?
Yeah, for legal assistance, period, and take out those, that's fine, I mean, there's so many ways you can do it, but I'll, I'll be fine with that, just take out.
Ms. Brenner, that's not, that's not actually what was on the floor, Mr. Bird's motion was after the word Cascadia Law Group was to end the sentence there.
Well, that's a, well, ye-
That was the motion on the floor.
Okay, that's a friendly amendment, I'll take that, I, I don't mind.
So, we have that, is, is Madam Clerk, are you clear? Good, further discussion on the motion on the floor.
Do you guys have it? Okay, they got it, that's what matters.
Do you have your hand up, Ms. Frazee?
Yep.
Further discussion on the motion on the floor, or in favor, all in favor of Ms. Brenner's motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
No, who was the ayes?
I said aye.
Okay, so we had, we've got, we've got three ayes here, what have we got here?
No.
No, three, three ayes, three noes, motion fails.
There you go.
Further discussion.
That's it.
Okay, no, never mind.
Okay.
It's just futile.
All right, seeing no further discussion.
No, are we back to the main?
We are, but now back to the main motion to adopt this resolution as amended by the council just now.
Yeah.
You got a lot of Scrivener's errors in it.
The, I'd like to know what the intention is, so, is this, is the intention that this resolution replaces the January fifteenth, what was sent, or the, the request from January fifteenth, and so we send this to planning instead, or?
Long.
This is on the second page, the county has expressed goals for more rest permitting CIPA.
What line?
Process is.
What line?
Five, six, seven, I'm sorry, you threw me there, goals in the county councils, October ninth and, and January fifth proposals, and whereas the council has submitted draft comp plan titled twenty, title twenty-two, or sixteen, language in, on January fifteenth for the planning commission to consider, we recognize that the proposals would benefit from additional legal review, so my understanding is Cascadia is getting those proposals, they've got that language, they're going to subject that language to legal review, as it says, further to develop code language and comp plan amendments, working with PDS, that's the intent as I see it written, because that's how it's written.
Ms. Brenner?
Okay, on one of the therefore be it resolved part, or be it further resolved, I would like number, a number five to say the council is withdrawing the ordinance proposed on January fifteenth from being sent to the planning commission.
If we motion a second, discussion on that, seeing none, all in favor.
You just explain what it is.
Where you are reading that, which, which line, which page?
Oh, it would be on page five, line four, which nothing's there, it, it would be a new, a new one, it'd be a number five, see, there's four of them there now, and this would make five, it would be an additional number, because it's the resolve part, and that's what I want.
You know, the, if you look at line thirty-five.
On page what?
Four, page four, this is about saying the PDS department should make sure that these following things do not get hindered, and now you're putting the, the January fifteen in there, that's not the right place, even if you want to put it in.
Okay, I got another, I got another way to do it.
Ms. Brenner?
A new one, be it finally resolved, how's that, that would take care of it, be it finally resolved that the ordinance proposed on January fifteenth will be withdrawn from being sent to the planning commission.
The point of procedure here, it was not an ordinance, it was not an ordinance, we didn't send an ordinance.
Oh, the January fifteenth one was a proposed ordinance, wasn't it?
No, it was just proposed.
That was a resolution, too?
No, it was, it was, okay, sorry.
A draft proposal, wasn't it?
Was the draft an ordinance or a resolution?
It was draft language, it was neither a resolution.
I said draft ordinance, if it's an ordinance, or draft resolution if it's a resolution. I thought it was draft ordinance. That's an ordinance, that's not a resolution.
Okay, so I stand corrected, okay, so, so that, is, is the clerk clear on the motion? Yes, discussion, Mr. Sedu?
Yeah.
Could you read it back?
Now therefore be it finally resolved that the draft ordinance proposed on January fifteenth is withdrawn from being sent to the planning commission.
Okay, I have a question about that, it was not an ordinance in itself, it was the, you know, like, when we were writing the comp plan amendments, we were going through and doing wordsmithing on the comp plan, different items which were already existed in the comp plan, and on January fifteen, there was an alternate wording, we had done some wording on October eight, and then on January fifteen, what it was is the alternate wording for those things, it, you know, like, it should be rewritten in this way, and it was actually, you know, what do you call it, track changes, so, the whole purpose, let me complete, let me complete, the whole purpose of getting advice from Cascadia Law is that if we propose this new wording, means new wordsmithing, is it admissible, or is it proper, or are we doing it wrong, it just defeats the whole purpose of doing this whole thing, you got to think through, that we were doing wordsmithing, and then somebody else did more wordsmithing, and we are disputing that, that we didn't like the wordsmithing, that's all we are talking about, there was no separate resolution to send, it was the, in light of the same resolution, now we were seeking an advice that the second part of track changes, is it acceptable, or what are the flaws in that so that we don't proceed with those changes, that's how I perceive it.
Mr. Donald?
Mr. Sedu said most of what I was going to say, but, yeah, that, we, we came up, we got as far as January fifteenth, there were concerns that that needed further review, whether, I thought through the planning commission with staff, this is taking it a step farther in having legal review of that before it goes to the planning commission, if we say that thing is gone, then, what's the point, so?
I have another question, because I think it will help clarifying this.
Okay, but Ms. Brenner, Ms. Brenner was next.
If you let.
I'm sorry, we're not taking public testimony any further, thank you, Ms. Brenner, you were next.
Okay, you're right, everybody's right about what it is, it's still called a draft ordinance proposal, that's what it's called, it's the January fifteenth draft ordinance amendment proposal, and it's major, it's not just a little tweaking here and there, it was major.
No, it's not, it's major.
And unless you guys are not really.
I don't know if this will make a difference, but the title on the agenda for the special committee of the whole meeting on January fifteenth was discussion regarding preliminary draft comprehensive plan and zoning code amendments for Cherry Point, I don't know exactly what it was that you sent forward to the planning commission, but it would not have been in the form of an ordinance.
Okay, the January fifteenth proposed draft comprehensive plan, et cetera, language, there was, it was major, it wasn't just tweaking, it was major stuff, and I think that, that that was the beginning of getting people really concerned, people had their concerns on both sides before that, but that was pretty, whether you like it or you don't like it, it was a pretty dramatic change from what we had.
So, just a second, so if you wish to speak, we're going to have an open public session after we've dealt with this issue.
That's exactly what my comment is, is this going to keep on until there is no public comments allowed?
Oh.
Because this whole resolution, when you're talking about the possible extinction of the whole human species, which is what is happening, is.
So, I'm not, I'm not going to entertain public comment at this point, there will be a public comment period after this?
As long as there's time, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw the whole thing.
Okay.
He's right, we shouldn't have waited so long for open session.
Mr. Schroeder, do you have a comment?
I just had Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive, one point to Councilmember Brenner's suggestion here, on page two of the resolution, at the top, on, on line two through three, it refers to preliminary draft containing proposed changes to the county comprehensive plan and county code, and then on line eight, it refers to the January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen proposal, so this resolution does refer specifically to that, and those could be terms that council could make an action if they wanted to, if, if you so choose to withdraw that January fifteenth proposal from consideration.
Okay.
But she's, Ms. Brenner's already withdrawn the motion, so.
Well, what he, what he said is my exact motion, that works.
Okay, so you're now making an amended motion?
I'm making another motion, different, and I'm, sorry, this will be it.
Ms. Brenner, would you state your motion, please?
Removal of all parts of the January fifteenth proposal, that's the be it finally resolved, be, be it finally resolved that all parts of the January fifteenth proposal be removed from being sent to the planning commission.
Okay, do I have a second for Ms. Brenner's motion?
Along the lines, could we do something along the lines where it's, it's more, go back to the original one, be it finally resolved, that this resolution will replace the January fifteenth resolution, or replaces the January fifteenth resolution?
January fifteenth wasn't a resolution.
Oh, the January fifteenth document sent to, we're, we're, we're just saying, this is replacing that, essentially.
Well, accept it.
Because removing it from here doesn't mean that it still isn't being sent.
Well, it is if we don't remove all the, all the references to it.
No, then it's still there, they still have it, unless we specifically say, hey, we, this is going to replace.
That's what I'm specifically saying, I don't want it, I don't want them considering that at this point.
So, you see, you're suggesting that this document be the guiding document for the process, or what?
That was kind of my interpretation of it, based on the limited time I've had to review it, was that this was going to be replacing that document as direction to staff.
But it includes it in this document.
As a reference point, which I think it would have to if we're replacing it, because you have to say what you're replacing, but.
Mr. Sedu?
You know, the whole.
Never mind, I'm withdrawing everything, forget it.
All right, so Ms. Brenner's.
I would have done it.
So, just a second, Mr. Sedu, Ms. Brenner has withdrawn her motion, so if you wish to speak.
Okay, if she's withdrawing, I will stop.
Okay, further discussion on the main motion to accept this as amended, Mr. Bird?
So, for clarity, this does not replace that document as it stands, it will go with that document, that.
This is a request to have that document be subject to legal review before it goes to the planning commission.
I'm sorry, you, you laugh about it like we had a whole bunch of time to sit here and read this and review it.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I just.
So, which, I guess we'll bring up my actual testimony on, or comment on this, and this entire process, just for reference here, one, we've been here since nine AM, the, so it's been a long day, and, two, this entire process, since the beginning of the year or even the end of the last year, has been flawed, in my opinion, and what I mean by that is, I think the best way to describe it is just to recap real quickly what that process has been, October ninth, we reviewed the preliminary draft updates and went over them, and we left those updates on October ninth to finish out the year and year-end items, as well as the two-year budgeting process that we had to go through, during, right after that, we had public testimony from industries that came forward to talk about that draft and their input on it, and answer questions that we had given them, before we had an opportunity to talk amongst each other about that input and address how it may affect this document, we went on winter break, in which our council office is closed for essentially four to six weeks, that's through the Christmas season, the weekend of Christmas break, we get sent a new document with new changes, while we're all on break, out of the office, with our families, for Christmas, and we're expected to somehow know that this is in our email, because, you know, we all work on Christmas when we're hanging out with our children, right, and have time to review this, it shows up on the very first meeting of the year, now, if you look at the resolution that was put forward today, what standard format about this resolution is it says, proposed by Brown, Donovan, and Sedu, it tells you who put it in the packet, everything that we get shows who put it in the packet, the item that came to us on January fifteenth packet didn't tell us where it came from, matter of fact, it didn't even have a unique label, what it did say, and still says up at the top, is preliminary draft from October ninth, suggesting that it was the document we left on October ninth, the exact same document we saw at that point in time, when that came up in our council meeting two weeks ago, did we have an opportunity to discuss it? Absolutely not, instead, what happened was it was forced through without anybody reading it, except for one council member who wrote it in private amongst two or three other individuals who are unelected and decided on this, but, you know, what we were told was that they were minor changes, the hard part about it was, usually when we track changes and we review changes as a council, we track everything, matter of fact, we track it all in different colors based on the version, so we know exactly what every single version change was, the document we got didn't show any of those versions, it is so different and lacks so much information, that when it was sent back to our staff, and we asked them to combine it with the original document, they were unable to, they can't match it to the original document because we didn't track the changes to do so, now, that was two weeks ago, since then, what we've been told is, hey, this is a lot more damaging than what we thought it would be, now, as council members, I don't know how we would know that, because we didn't discuss it in public, instead, what we got an hour and a half, two hours before this meeting, was an entirely new version, and if you go back to the exact same committee meeting that we had right before this, you'll hear suggestions that the reason that we got this one was because there was such grave concerns about what was in this document that nobody read, that all of a sudden that we- without any notice, without putting it on the agenda on Thursday with everything else that the public got, we had to force this through today in order to stop our staff from being able to move forward with this document that nobody read on the 15th. And somehow, this is funny, and we're laughing about it, because, you know, we should have all really been talking about this today, what was on the agenda. In reality, something brand new showed up on the agenda again. To me, I'm a little tired, I'm a little flabbergasted, at the whole thought that this is public process and public transparency. The one thing I heard from everyone that come up here tonight was pretty even on both sides. They said over and over again, "Take your time." Both sides said, "Take your time. Don't rush it. Do it right. We care about the environment. We care about the jobs. Take your time. Do it right." Is this taking your time? Is this doing it right? I don't think it is. So, I'm not going to vote for it. I appreciate that it changes some of the things potentially on the 15th, but at the end of the day, the process is not right. And I would argue, or I would beg anyone up here to argue, that somehow that this is a good process that gives public transparency and public input, and asks these people to trust us, and put their faith in our ability to do what's right. Or better yet, put their faith in our ability to give them better public process in the future, knowing that what we've given them up to this point in time. I'm done.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry. Have you, the rules are if, if...
Yeah, you wouldn't want somebody to admit.
Sir, sir, please respect the rules of the council if you wish to participate. If you don't, if we don't have respect for the rules of the council, we'll simply get up and move out of the room until such time as they are respected. So. Ms. Brenner.
I just want to apologize. You're right. We didn't even get to open session yet, and I'm really sorry about that, so...
Further discussion on the main motion. Seeing none, all in favor of approving this as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
It passes four to two, with Brenner and Bird opposed, and Mr. Buchanan out of the room. Next item up is the open session. During any open session, audience members can speak to the council on any issue not scheduled for public hearing. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and optionally include city of residence. Speakers will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of time limits and inform the speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude comments. And I'm just going to add another comment, which I hope we include in future too. When using the microphone, please speak close enough to it that you can hear yourself on the speakers. This will ensure that everybody else can hear your comments as well.
Before my time starts, I would, I would ask the council, when you're going to be going past 11 o'clock in the evening, for the sake of senior citizens, please have the opportunity to address you earlier in the evening. Okay? I'm on my time now. My name is Bobby Burr. I'm from the Barkley District of Bellingham. I have a question for you. Raise your hands if you're allowed to. How many of you have thought about what this county council will look like 100 years from today? Well, I have. And sadly, I believe that this council will not exist because I believe that life on earth will not exist. A great majority of scientists agree that we are in the midst of the sixth mass extinction. We cannot remove the heat that we have already put in the oceans. We cannot remove the 40 billion tons of carbon that we pump into the atmosphere every single year. We may not be able to change what is happening, and far worse things are coming. Even now, scientists agree that species loss is 1,000 to 10,000 times greater than would have been expected if climate patterns hadn't been changing. Most also agree that we have but 11 short years to turn things around to get to carbon neutrality, or else it is game over. And it will be too late to avert mass extinction. And these grave predictions assume that we will develop robust carbon recapture mechanisms in the future. Let me stress, mass extinction for today's species, which includes us, is forever. Time has almost run out. This is an emergency that the public needs to address, and the public needs to realize that. So I have but one ask for the council tonight, and that is that you, at your next meeting, follow the lead of London, Los Angeles, Montgomery County, Maryland, Hoboken, and three California cities in passing a resolution declaring a climate emergency.
If there's no one else wishes to speak at the open public session, this will be the last, you know, I see somebody else wishes to speak, so please speak.
I'm Mark Waschke. And I've been here not all, not the whole evening, but I was here at the beginning and listened, listened to what was, what has been said. Now, here later on tonight, I've heard, heard speak of biased lawyers. Now, I live in Watcom County here, and I've seen red sky at noon. I've also am, am aware that 40 years ago, the American Petroleum Institute knew that carbon was going to cause us some really serious problems, and all big oil does. And obviously, we need oil. Somebody already said that tonight. Somebody also mentioned the carbonization of the ocean. They didn't mention the 200 square miles of dead zones. That's where, that's where we get our oxygen. Now, also, the one thing here, there was one comment about, I think by Barbara, by climate, it almost sounded like climate denial, talking about the rain on Mount Baker. I was up to Mount Baker when the smoke was up. We were going to try and get above it. I went up there, it was like Mordor. You couldn't breathe. And some of the people here who really want jobs for their kids, one person said he had a two-year-old. What kind of world is he going to get? Our orcas are probably going to go extinct. They're down 75, perhaps less, right now, and any more traffic is going to get them. This whole thing that we've done today, that started in October, when this was put out, it's been here since six, or 6:30 this morning, this is the pimple. It's a tiny little pimple. This whole expansion at Cherry Point is not going to make any difference on whether we survive. Greta Thunberg has just gotten done addressing some of the, some of the biggest leaders and some of the most well-connected people in the world, not in just Watcom County. So I kind of like this climate emergency thing that a number of people have already signed on to. We are in a climate emergency. We've seen the symptoms right here, right now, the last two years.
30 seconds, please.
800 square miles of Washington burned two years ago. 5,000 square miles of Alaska in the tundra. One meter, one meter-sized sinkholes in Siberia have grown to kilometer-sized sinkholes. That's methane. That's what caused the great extinction 250,000, or 250 million years ago that killed out all dinosaurs.
Time.
Now, I don't know about anybody else, but I want to have a garden before then and not just ginkgos.
If anyone else wishes to speak, please line up, otherwise we'll close the public session.
Kathy Sable, District Three. I attended the Natural Resources Committee meeting this morning, when you talked about status on ESSB 6091. So there was a couple of things came up from the council in that meeting I kind of wanted to ask you more about. One was hearing the council say, "Who's got authority? I don't know who's got authority. We don't have authority. We have no control. Planning unit doesn't have control. The YR1 management board doesn't have control. Who's got control?" I think you, as our elected officials, should know who has control of water issues here has the authority. And if you don't know, I'm asking you now. Find out, please. Thank you. The other one, a couple of other things. In that same committee meeting, there was a three-person vote, because it's a committee, there's only three people who can vote, that said the council would support the letter the planning unit is sending to the legislature and to Department of Ecology, saying what is happening right now, the status. I'm not clear on procedure. Does it need to be voted on by the full council to have that kind of, whatever you call it, sorry, decision made? So I'd like to know that, too. And then, what's going to also happen next month, when the YR1 management board meets, I think they said February 22nd, they're going to go ahead with their plans for their own letter. It won't be the same as the planning unit's. So are you going to then vote in that committee and say, "Yep, we're going to back them, too"? That was what I brought up the last time I was here, and I think that was, I'm losing track, sorry, it's late. I think it was in December, where I'm going, "Somebody should bring these two groups together," because right now, that board is saying, "We are not getting on board with the planning unit. We do not support their letter. We will not be with them." So I think you, as a lead agency of YR1, you are the lead agency. You have the authority, was my understanding. Can you somehow get these groups together, at least on a letter? And then lastly, I think we all need to have a session of lesson learned. What do we learn in this process? I've heard a lot of different points this morning from the council. I've heard other groups. Can we get everybody in the same room and try to pick out what we've learned so we don't repeat it? So we know what the process is? What's a good process? Everybody here, I heard this morning, said, "Not a good process." I'd like to be going forward with something good that we've learnt from this, lots of money, lots of labor, and we didn't really get what any of us wanted. Thank you.
Ms. Sable, would you leave your name, phone number, and email address with a clock for me?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello.
Mr. Gay.
Bob Gay again, Watcom County resident. I just got a quick comment here. Business and Commerce Advisory Committee, it came up back in May, it was created, you'd had last meeting introduced, adding another healthcare representative. And I was just wondering, there's a lot of for-profit business, there's politicians, and there's really no designated labor representative. And I know it's all about business, but labor has a little problem with, usually if we're not sitting at the table, we're on the menu. I mean, and it just, it repeats over and over. And so I just, at some point, maybe, put that for consideration. And I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urie, I think you're the last person. And by the way, if there's no one else wishes to speak...
Unless there's anybody else?
If anybody else wishes to speak, you need to line up now, otherwise Mr. Urie will be the last person.
Hello again. I'm Eddie Urie with Resources for Sustainable Communities. I was under the impression that we would have open session before voting on this resolution, given that we only saw it for the first time today at 5:00. It's a complete surprise for everyone. And my understanding during council committee discussion was that it was simply asking funding for Cascadia Law, which had already been budgeted for. We had an extra $75,000 that was set aside for the specific purpose, which we're now asking for it to be spent. That's all completely reasonable. It makes sense. But we wouldn't even need to pass a resolution to ask for that. You could just ask the county executive to do it by a simple motion. The purpose of the resolution seems to be to lay out a lot of information about the council's intent for all to see at the council meeting tonight. I understand the benefit of that. I see that it was a good intention. However, then going about this only, you know, there was discussion about it in the committee meeting today. It was, it didn't go undiscussed, let's, let's grant that, right? But then doing it at 11:00 PM tonight, like, I think this thing could have been tabled and worked on, and I'll concede to Commissioner Bird on that point. Likewise, I wanted to be known that when, you know, on January 15th amendments came forward, it was not my expectation that they be voted on and passed that day, no less, given that the document was mislabeled with the wrong date, which was confusing. I believe it was the expectation of Councilmember Donovan and others, who did receive the document more than three weeks before, and had all had the chance to review it and agree on it. So granted, it wasn't like it just came out, you know, with no chance to review it. Like, I apologize if you, if you really missed it in your inbox and weren't aware of it coming forward. But, you know, the, I think the expectation was that staff are the ones who labeled the thing and put it in the packet, and there was an expectation that the amendments that were sent in were going to get properly formatted, and they weren't. That led to more confusion, which I think, you know, has been somewhat exploited here to create more of a ruckus than is needed. But that could have been avoided simply by tabling that motion, bringing it back. So, you know, I, I think, like, there is an urgency, because the longer we drag these things out, there are people that are actively trying to delay it, drag it out longer, forces staff to extend the moratorium again. That's happening, so I get the wanting, you know, we want this to be the last time the moratorium gets extended. But I did have some serious concerns about some content of this resolution and the specific criteria of what you're asking the law firm to do. And it would have been nice to be able to, you know, for everyone to be able to look at that before sending it forward in this form. So, you know, I think, just wanted to be known here, this wasn't like, this didn't happen the way I expected. And I understand your intentions are good, and there's reasons, rationale for it. But, yeah, I think it's always best to take a little bit more time and let people look at it. So, and I'll agree with that, which granted was the case for the January 15th amendments. Everyone had a chance to review them. But that discussion could have gone more smoothly. So, thanks for your time. And again, I just want to say thank you so much for doing this, and of course, in general, your continued support in this issue is greatly appreciated, so make no mistake there. So thanks for putting in the long hours, long evenings here. Good night.
With that, we'll close the public session. All right, next item up is the consent agenda. Mr. Sudu.
We have four items on the consent agenda, and they received 3-0 vote, and I saw move item one through four for approval.
Sorry, Mr. Burr. Bob? Mr. Burr?
No, you're, not me, him.
Yeah, sorry. Mr. Burr, sorry, that chair's reserved for the executive, Deputy Executive Schroeder.
Just testing it.
No, no. No, no, but if Mr. Schroeder needs to comment, because we're going to need him to comment on different things, he needs to be able to sit in that chair, because the microphone is there. Not that the chair...
He's seated here. He should be able to sit.
Mr. Burr, not that the chair doesn't look good on you, because it does. So, anyway.
I don't want to sit in that chair.
Okay, guys, it's getting late. Let's move on. So, Mr. Sudu, you've moved for approval of all these?
I moved for approval, item one through four on the consent agenda.
Items one through four on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those pass unanimous, oh, sorry. Passes 6-0 with Mr. Buchanan excused.
Okay, the next item is AB 2019-033, ordinance amending the 2019-2020 Watcom County Budget Request Number One in the amount of $778,500. This received 2-1 vote on the committee, and I saw move for approval.
Any staff report on this? Seeing none. Any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Dawn.
Oh, sorry.
It's a long night.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Sapp Paul Sudu?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
That passes six, sorry, that passes five to one, with Mr. Burr opposed and Mr. Buchanan excused. Next item up?
Next item is AB 2019-036, ordinance amending Watcom County Code 2.108, Bellingham Watcom County Commission against... County Commission Against Domestic Violence, Expanding the Scope of the Commission and Referring to Interlocal Agreement with City of Bellingham. This received 3-0 vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
And there was gonna be someone who was gonna be here to answer questions, but unfortunately, they were called home. So if, just to let you know, they were, they did try and make themselves available for this and one of the other items. So, any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes, that passes 6 to 0 with Buchanan excused.
Next item is AB 2019-040, Ordinance Amending Watcom County Code Chapter 2.128, Business and Commerce Advisory Committee to Add One Additional Member. This received 3-0 vote, and I saw move for approval.
Been moved for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Brenner.
Yeah, actually, I wasn't in here when it happened this morning, but I did talk to Councilmember Bird about it, that I feel like we should have a construction job in there. Otherwise, we're gonna have an even number of voting members, and that's never good, because you can, things have to be able to pass somehow. So it's not good to have an even number of members. And we, when we first did it, we did comment, several of us, that, "Wow, you know, this is a great commission, but we forgot to put anybody from the construction industry in there." And since you brought this up about the healthcare one, which I think is a good idea, I think we should have both of them in there.
So just a point of process with this particular committee, because it's done in concert with the Port of Bellingham, if you wish to do that, I'd like to recommend that you contact them, have a discussion with them, and coordinate with them, and then come back with it if you wanna make a further amendment.
Okay, I'll move to table this, then. I'd like to table it so that they can do it at the same time, so that we don't end up with a, for any period of time, end up with an even amount of members.
Not sure there is an even amount, by the way. It's because it says the committee should be composed of 19 members.
How many?
They're not all voting.
Well, yeah, those are not voting members. There's 10, with your amendment, there'll be 10 voting members, which is an even number.
Mr. Sedu.
We clearly had a discussion about the construction, and the, and it was agreed that the real estate, commercial real estate position was, because BIAW was part of this discussion, and they agreed that we will have person representing commercial real estate, could be a developer, could be a construction company, could be a Realtor. So that was discussed and covered at that time.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, it may have been discussed at that time, but again, it was an odd number, which made it kinda work out okay. I was not at your discussion, but I brought that up at the last time we went over this. And since we're adding a position that would make it an even amount of voting members, I think it's a good time to look at that. I think there's a huge difference between real estate and construction. I mean, they both have to do with building, but that's about it.
Mr. Sedu and Mr. Burr.
It was discussed. It is, that's why the word, it is not Realtor, the word commercial real estate word was decided and was agreed by BIAW that this is what they would like. Now, the, now I forgot another thing. Yes, the other thing is, this request came from the Business Advisory Committee and the Port. I would rather have your suggestion sent to them if they wanna do that, or why stop this thing? Because we can add another person if we want to. Like, it doesn't make any sense to stop this now, and then, because you wanna add another person. Now, somebody else comes and wanna, maybe a month from now, they wanna add another person. Should we wait for that, too? So this is like, on the instant, on the fly, get an idea, like, well, let's stop everything. It doesn't make sense to me. This has gone through more than two months of the process to add that person. They send a request, we put it on the docket, we went through that. Now, at the spur of the moment, let's stop this also. Like, it doesn't make any sense. Yes, I agree. If you would like to add a person, you should make a new request, and we can add a person. I am not opposed to that. But let them deal with their business, their odd people, even number of people. This is an advisory committee. They haven't even started their work. And, and, and we are nitpicking on them. Let them do their work.
Mr. Burr.
Brand-new committee.
No, I'm not ticked off. I just didn't see your hand. Sorry.
I share the concern about 10, being an even number. I'm more concerned about the size of the committee, and it continuing to get larger. The larger it gets, the more difficult it will be to get things through them in a speedy time. I think we can all agree that there's no possible way that we can create a position on this committee to represent every industry and every business size in Watcom County today or in the future. It is also, I'll point out, the reason why we put two seats on the committee that can be filled by any category of business, and those are there now. So I'm not sure why we're, we need to do this at all. I mean, we have an odd number, we have a good-sized committee, it's well-rounded, representing the industries that we have. I know it doesn't represent them all, but we have space for additional ones that we can rotate through with time. So the, I'm okay not moving forward with this at all, to be honest.
Okay. So where are we at with the motion? Do we have a, we had a motion to amend, is that right?
Hold in committee.
Motion to hold in committee. I see. The motion, did I get a second for the hold in committee? No.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a second to hold, no kidding me. All in favor, sorry, any further discussion of the motion to hold in committee? Seeing none, all in favor of holding committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No, I'm in favor. I was just wondering, because he put his hand up like...
No, it's okay. I didn't wanna discuss.
So that fails 4 to 2 with Brenner and Burr opposed. Now, we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing, we have a, we have a motion and a second for the main motion. Correct. Yep. Any further discussion, Ms. Brenner?
I just wanna make it very clear that nobody calls a spur of the moment, or anti-this, or anti-that. It has nothing to do with what the category is. It has to do with having an odd number on committees. And we've had committees that have had stalemates because they couldn't get a majority. It would be, you know, half this and half that. It's happened. And I'm not gonna support it without having either another category for something besides just the, the one more category. You're gonna have an even amount of members with o vote.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
That passes 6. Sorry?
I'm standing. Isn't this a roll?
It's an ordinance.
Okay, then that fails.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry. It's a roll call, so, all right. Ms. Brenner, Ms...
Todd Donovan. Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
No.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
No.
Failed.
That fails 3 to 2 with one abstention. It needs a minimum of 4, so that fails.
Like when abstention is a no vote?
Yeah, right.
You need every, every motion.
I'm sorry.
That was good.
That's making it real complicated.
All right.
Okay, the next item. The next item on the agenda is AB 2019-082, Request for the County Council to Approve the Criminal Justice Treatment Account Plan. Received 3-0 vote, so I so move for approval.
Been moved for approval. Any discussion? Mr. Burr.
So we talked about this earlier today. We were gonna see if there was a deadline on it. I didn't see anything on that, but you are here.
Boy, he stayed here all night.
It's like almost midnight. I'm impressed.
I am Human Services Supervisor with the Health Department and gathered some information. There is an expectation of submitting the plan by, to the state CGTA committee by the end of January.
When is that?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Before the next meeting, so I think we should vote.
And so we knew the timeframe was close by.
Before the end of January, that's in two days.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, I did wanna mention as well that Mr. Buchanan made a request that there be a presentation at the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force in this regard, in terms of the plan, which we will certainly make certain happens.
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
If I can ask, is this, is this an annual renewal?
It is an annual, it is an annual plan that is completed and processed through the state CGTA.
Okay, so sometime between now and the next renewal, we could have a more detailed discussion if that was the wish.
Indeed.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0 with Mr. Buchanan excused.
The next item is AB 2019-087, Request Authorization for County Executive to Enter Into an EDI Interlocal Loan and Grant Agreement Between Watcom County and Port of Bellingham in Amount of $250,000. This received 2-1 vote, you know?
No, I thought we held this for a presentation on the impact question.
By, yes, by raw fix, this was held.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we will table it.
Moving right along.
Moving right along. Next item.
Oh, no, you held it in committee, did you?
In committee, yeah.
Okay, fine.
Hold in committee. The next item, AB 2019-089, Request Authorization for County Executive to Enter Into a Contract Amendment Between Watcom County and Washington State University to Continue the Jointly Shared Costs for Faculty Positions and Program Support for WSU Extension in the Amount of $215,951, for a Total amended Contract Amount of $1,999,276.90. This received 3-0 vote in the committee, and I so move for approval.
Been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass, sorry, opposed? No, that passes 6-0 with Mr. Buchanan excused.
Next item, AB 2019-037, Request Authorization for County Executive to Enter Into an Interlocal Agreement Between Watcom County and City of Bellingham Regarding the City of Bellingham Watcom County Commission on Domestic and Sexual Violence. This received 3-0 vote, and I saw move for approval.
Been moved for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0 with Mr. Buchanan excused.
Next item is AB 2019-034, Resolution Amending the 2019 Flood Control Zone District and Subzones Budget Request Number 1 in the Amount of $35,000. Council Acting as Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. This received 2-1 vote in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
Been moved for approval, and in this case, the council is acting as the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu.
Yes.
Barbara Brenner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Oh.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
That passes 5 to 1 with Mr. Burr opposed and Mr. Buchanan excused.
The next item is AB 2019-049, Resolution Canceling Uncollectible Personal Property Taxes. And this received 3-0 vote in the council, in the committee, and I saw move for approval.
It's been moved for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Frazee.
I just wanted to know, since Mr. Oliver is here, if he wants to speak, since he's stayed. No, okay.
He's okay.
Then no discussion.
We appreciate you staying so late and being here.
Only thing is, now, I actually have always considered Mr. Oliver to be quite bright, but the fact that he's sitting here till midnight and doesn't wanna say anything.
He's, he likes, he was bored or something. Is that what it was?
Okay, no further discussion? No?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0 with Mr. Buchanan excused, and Mr. Oliver's sanity in question. Next item up, please, is a resolution appointing the appointment of one council member to serve as an optional alternate member of the Washington State Association of Counties Board of Directors, and this is added as an agenda item. It was the pink one. Does someone have a copy of it?
Oh, the green thing? What color?
No, this one, yeah, if you can just give me that.
Yeah, this, this is for the alternate.
Yeah, so this, this, I'm introducing this, well, we can vote on it tonight, because it's just a resolution. And just, the background to this is that Mr. Burr sort of gently chided me because I was still interested in serving on WASAC. And I said I'd give him a chance. So when I was last down at WASAC, I asked if we could have an alternate, if we wanted to. It's an optional position, but WASAC is quite happy to have two of us go down there if we want. So this just adds it to our list of positions, and if someone wishes to apply for it, they're welcome to do so. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0 with Mr. Buchanan excused. Next item up is Council Appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Appointments to Fill Vacancies in the Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee. Applicants at Geographic Area, Dale Block, Albert DeBoer, Scott Hulse, Kent Roder, Special Districts Ron Bronsma, Jeff Young. Impacted Cities, Carl Christensen, John Perry. Council Acting, in this case, is the Watcom County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. Move to appoint. And... I didn't think there was, I thought, there was no, there was no conflict, was there?
No, but there is the one applicant that you need to choose that's gonna fill a partial term.
Correct, okay. So we had a move to appoint. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Brenner, seconds. Any discussion at moving to appoint all of them, and then I will ask for us to choose one for the different term. Ms. Brenner.
I have a suggestion. The person who put their name in last can serve as the partial position. Applied last. I don't know who it would be.
I don't have a problem if, can I just ask that we do that as a second motion?
Oh. Well, I just think we should do them by acclamation and have the staff determine who applied latest.
That's fine, but can we do that as a second motion?
Okay.
All right. So any further discussion? I'm moving to appoint all of these to the respective positions, leaving the odd term for a second motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0 with Mr. Buchanan excused, and now your motion was what, Ms. Brenner? Would you state your motion again now?
The one, I moved to have the person fill the, the partial position who applied latest.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
No discussion. Do you have a record of that, or the date on the application?
When they send them in, they...
Sure. I support that.
Do you know who that is offhand?
No.
I'll just add that I think that's a great idea, and we should just do that moving forward with every one of them versus doing this every single time.
Bring it up as a proposal at another meeting.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0 with Mr. Buchanan excused. Next item up is Appointment to Fill Vacancy in the Portage Bay Shelffish Protection District Advisory Committee. Applicant is Alan Chapman.
Move to appoint.
Mr. Donovan moves to appoint. Do we have a second?
A second.
Mrs. Sedu, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0 with Mr. Buchanan excused. Next item up is To Apoint to Fill the Vacancy in the Sumas, Everson, Nuxak Flood Control Zone Advisory Committee. Applicant is Jerry Jergens. Do we have a motion to appoint? Mr. Donovan moves to appoint.
Second.
I need someone.
Me, seconding.
Ms. Frazee, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 6 to 0 with Mr. Buchanan excused. Next item up is Executive Appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Committees. A County Executive, Jack Lowell, requests confirmation of his new appointments and reappointments to executive boards and committees. Appointments to take place affect on February 1st, 2019. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve.
Mr. Donovan moves to approve.
Moved to confirm.
Moved to confirm. Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Sudu, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero with Mr. Buchanan excused, and Mr. Donovan, you going to say something? You just said aye.
I said aye.
Okay, introduction items. Is there a motion to introduce?
Moved to introduce.
Mr. Donovan moves to introduce. Do I have a second? Mr. Bird, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero with Mr. Buchanan excused. My gosh, we might actually get out of here on the same day. Okay.
Oh, look at that.
Committee reports, natural resources.
Uh, natural resources had three items on the agenda, selecting a chair. I got to do that. Um, then two presentations, one from Parks about a dock up in Point Roberts that is getting beat up and may need to be removed. Um, that's going to go for further discussion. Uh, the main, or the bigger thing, I guess, was we had, um, a report on the YR1 1691 process where the planning unit did not pass a plan for us to, uh, evaluate. So we did not. Uh, we did move to support their motion to index the work that they've done, send that to ecology, uh, with a letter saying what they've done and a plan that they will keep working. Um, but there was no plan.
So can I, um, is that a motion from committee? That should probably be a motion from the council.
Okay, so they, they were, there was a three zero vote from the committee to support the planning unit's motion. I can't remember exactly how it was worded. You got it? And it moved.
The motion is to recommend that the county council support the vote of the planning unit at its last meeting on January 23rd to send the letters and the catalog of materials to ecology and state legislators.
I was close.
And the letters, just for clarity, my, and the letter was what? What was the content of the letter?
Planning unit is planning to write a letter. December, yeah. December 12th, something like that.
Yeah.
Are you yawning, Ms. Frakes, or did you have a question? All right, Ms. Brenner.
Um, I move to amend to say the majority of the planning unit.
Uh, did I get a second for the motion? Did I need a motion since I came in?
You do need, uh.
A second.
If your motion was to send to the full council, you don't need a second if you're making a new motion.
No, I, I moved to send to the council the recommendation from the committee.
Was that, was that the natural resources committee's recommendation?
The natural resources committee's recommendation was exactly what Jill just read.
Send it to the full council.
No, it was to just support.
Okay, so then, so then I need a second to your motion.
My amendment is to approve the, um, majority of the planning unit's.
Can't have amendment until I got a main motion. I have a motion from Mr. Donovan to forward this on. I need a second from Mr. Donovan's motion. Mr. Bird, seconds. Right. Now you want to make a motion to amend?
Yes, to amend that it be from the ma- the majority vote of the planning unit. Period.
Second for that motion.
I'd have to hear it. I don't understand it right now in my head.
With the amendment?
Yeah.
To recommend that the county council support the vote of the majority of the planning unit at its last meeting on January 23rd to send the letters and the catalog of materials to ecology and state legislators.
Again.
So there's a, Mr. We're speaking to the, we're speaking to the amendment?
Yeah.
Is that, okay, Mr. Sudu?
The question I have is, is, uh, are we saying the county council is sign, sending a letter? Or we are supporting the letter being sent by the planning unit, right? That's all we are doing is we are supporting. So it's just a resolution that we support that. We don't have to do anything.
If I change a substance, like you.
Yeah, it's, it's the same thing.
It's, we're good to go.
Ms. Brenner, then Mr. Don.
We're the county council. We are supposed to take a position. Not just, you know, say, oh, we didn't do it. It was the planning unit, whi- which didn't do it according to whatever their rules say, something. The thing has gotten so convoluted and so confusing. I do believe we left the impression at our surface water committee meeting that we would support the majority vote of the planning commission, uh, the, the planning unit. And that's what my amendment wa- is.
Mr. Sudu?
I'm, I'm really not disputing the, the amendment. You know, and the planning unit is not going to send a letter by not majority vote. Not that three people can get together and they send their own letter. They are going to send a letter, and they're, they're, they are going to vote and send a letter. The planning unit majority will su- uh, will, will vote for that. So that's a given. Like, I don't know how we are assuming that a minority people from the planning unit will write the letter. Like, where would that assumption come from?
I didn't say that.
You just said that because it must be majority. It is understood that the planning unit has to have a majority who will write the letter.
You guys are talking about two different things.
You are saying a whole different thing than what I said. I'm talking about the, sending a letter from the council to the Department of Ecology supporting the majority vote on the planning commission, uh, on its last vote.
I agree with that.
Oh, good.
I misunderstood.
Okay, so we have, is the clerk clear on the motion? I, I just want, as long as you're clear on the motion, and it, okay, is everybody else clear on the motion?
Yep.
All right, and this is the motion to amend. So if there's no further dis- discussion on the motion to amend, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, yes, Mr. Don?
No.
Uh, so that's, how many ayes?
Four.
Four, five, that's five ayes. So that passes five to one with Mr. Donovan opposed and Mr. Buchanan excused.
It was just, it was just the letter, right?
Yeah.
This is just the motion to amend the letter.
Okay, right.
Now we're voting on the letter.
Okay, we did it. Let's move on.
If I haven't got you confused by now at midnight, I'm never going to do it.
Chair, chair, that, that, that wasn't right.
We're not, we're not taking over the planning uni- the, no.
Am I?
Sure, okay.
Am I confused now?
You're not, you're not saying that.
Oh.
So.
That was Ms. Brenner's motion.
Okay, now I'm confused. What did we just?
That was my motion.
Okay.
Is everybody, is everybody else?
No, Councilmember Brenner's motion is to, for the council to send a letter of our own supporting the majority decision from the planning.
Uh, no, that's, I was confused.
No.
That's why I was voting against it.
Okay. Can I change my vote?
So I think, I think we have to redo the vote, because I think there's no clarity on what we just voted on, so.
I don't know. I think you need a majority to vote, revote it.
Yes, we do. Okay, so I, I.
You're not going to get it either.
As a person who voted for it, I put it back on the table. Do I have a second to put it back on the table? It's been motioned, no, you, because you voted against it.
Second.
Second, so Ms. Frazi puts it back on the table. So we're, we're, the motion is to reconsider. All in favor of reconsidering the last vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That, that passes.
No, yeah.
That passes.
You voted for it.
I know, I did.
Four to two.
You're voting for it.
Brenner and Bird opposed and Buchanan excused. Now, what is the motion we want to put on the floor?
The county council support the vote of the planning unit at its last meeting on January 23rd.
Vote.
The majority.
Yeah, what vote then?
That's the motion you made in committee, so.
Mr. Don?
You had read it, there was more detail that you read the first time. That, that was, I assume, and the maker of the motion.
Let me start over. Uh, that the county council supp- the, support the vote of the planning unit at its last meeting on January 23rd to send the letters and the catalog of materials to ecology and legislators.
Okay. Right, so we're just supporting them?
That's all we're doing.
Yeah, okay. Is it, uh, Madam Clerk, do you believe we need to write a letter to that? Or we're just saying a voice vote and they're sending it direct? They're sending their own letter?
There's nothing about sending a letter.
Fine, fine, okay, yeah, that's fine. That's, that's what I thought, okay. So is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 What?
She had something she wanted to add.
You want to do something?
I was just making sure, we're just supporting them sending a letter.
That's the, that's my understanding of the vote.
Thank you.
You get, you get a couple of freebies this late at night. All right. Any further discussion or need for clarification?
I got further discussion.
Okay, so.
You know, this council is just completely shirking our authority to, to make a statement. Oh, yeah, let's just put it on, you know, it was supposed to be the planning unit and the county council. You're letting all these other groups, you know, get all, move out of the planning unit and have their own little private meetings. You're doing all this stuff. We've all been guilty of it, of letting them just get more and more and more expanded to where this whole thing is a mess, and now to do this, it's, to me, it's insulting, and I'm not supporting it.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none?
Motion now. We already done with everything.
No.
We already voted. There is no motion on the vote.
Are you sure? I didn't hear a vote.
We did.
Just to be sure, that's.
Right?
I don't know what, what are we voting for now?
No, because we're, we're, okay. Do you need clarification? Because I'm... No, I did not hear a vote either, so.
There are lots of votes. We just don't know what they were.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Who votes for motherhood and apple pie? Okay.
Whoever said we shouldn't be doing this stuff after 11 o'clock was right.
Okay, so for the sake of clarity and to avoid confusion, would you please reread the motion, and we'll vote directly? There's no further discussion.
The motion is that the county council support the vote of the planning unit at its last meeting on January 23rd to send the letters and the catalog of materials to ecology and state legislators.
Okay, so that's the motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes five to one with Brenner opposed and Buchanan excused. Anything else from natural resources? Was that, no, okay.
But it's.
Any else from finance and administration?
Finance and administration, we, uh, heard from Deputy Executive, Mr. Schroeder about the project for, uh, for this, uh, county courthouse. There have been issues with that. They had one bid. Uh, they thought it will be 1.9 million dollars, their own estimate, and they got a bid for 6.7 million. And, uh, so they, and there was only one bid, and they rejected that. And now they are regrouping and changing the scope of the project because small project scope, nobody want, is interested to make a bid on it. So they have added some items, and they also explained that what the savings would be on the maintenance if we don't do it for next three years, we'll still be spending money, uh, to, to, to do some maintenance work. So they're going to try again and, uh, come back to us once they have the bid and everything to share what information they have, and then we get to approve that.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, but there's a big part being left out here. This particular, um, pier, is it, is it a, what's it called? A, a floating?
Oh, that was, he covered that already.
Oh, you did?
That was at natural resources committee.
Already covered.
Yes.
So what are you talking about?
I'm talking about this building.
Oh, that, ooh, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that, that's about it in our committee.
Oh, never mind. It's too late.
All right, uh, committee of the whole executive session, we had a discussion regarding drinking water. What would be, so, well, we put a docket on the, I'm just trying to think the right way to describe it. What was it? Uh, where is the general?
Yeah, but.
Yeah, we had a discussion with Chief Deputy, uh, Chief Civil Deputy Prosecutor Karen Frakes regarding a proposed ordinance amending Watcom County Code 24.11 drinking water. This discussion took place in executive session pursuant to RCW 4030, 1101 parentheses, one parentheses, aye. Uh, Public Works and Health.
We had a discussion regarding the need for additional streetlights in the Kendall area. We were very lucky to have our, uh, Public Works Director come and talk to us about it. He's going to look into it, and he got the name of the person from Kendall who brought it forward, and they're going to be communicating, and he's going to come back to us and give us, um, some ideas, hopefully, and options of what we can do. It's a very dangerous situation out there because it's so dark, and there's really sharp turns and all, and it's, it's just really not safe.
Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee, Ms. Mr. Buchanan, and I think all they did was appoint the chair. Was that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, he said that's what it was, really.
Planning and Development Committee, Mr. Bird.
We went over the TDR and Density Credit Program, and we touched on the code scrub, which was an introductory item tonight.
And then in the Special Committee of the Whole this afternoon, we discussed the resolution that we just voted on this site this evening regarding Cherry Point. Other items, Ms. Frazi?
I just want to thank everyone for being here and staying. And democracy is beautiful.
Gee, a beau- I'm not sure if that's the word I could use, but messy.
Must be.
And beautiful.